And I'm going to call the workshop of the City of Castle Hills together. In case you're unfamiliar what this is, since ours is, this is the first time. A while back, we passed a ordinance where we're going to have a workshop every other time. And so at 6:41, I'm calling this workshop session to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Hang on just a second here. Minnie? Just a second, please. Where's the invocation in the pledge? Are we not going to do it? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to enter into our work session. Mr. Brennan, I need to speak to you for a moment. We're going to start off with the invocation with Mr. Pinkston. Thank you. Let's go to the Lord here. Heavenly Father, we just want to open this meeting by just giving you praise and thanks for the incredible day, the soft rain that's come down through the day and just taking care of our community. What a wonderful place this is, Castle Hills, to live and work and to serve. And I want to thank you for the service of Mayor Howell, the council members tonight, and all the citizens and the city staff who are assembled here tonight. I pray that just wisdom would reign as we weigh just how we take care of people and just implementing policies and taking care of all the practical issues around our community. God, I just pray that there would be wisdom in the room and a sense of peace would land in the hearts of each one of these council members on the best decision for our community and for our city staff and for just doing the right thing. It's always right to do the right thing. And I just pray that the promises that you've given us about just honoring each other and having a spirit of respect and mutual respect and kindness and as we just exercised tonight, the freedom of assembly and the freedom of speech and the opportunities that we have been afforded by the great sacrifices of those who have made the way for us to have this flag and our pledges and our Star Spangled Banner and all the things that are in the news these days. We just, we're glad to be in a wonderful little place like Castle Hills where all those things matter so much. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Mr. Thomas McLean, would you mind coming up and lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLean is a fifth grader over at our own Castle Hills Elementary School. About the age I was deciding that I wanted to be the mayor sometime. That's a joke. Okay. Now, we're going to move into this work session. First item we're going to discuss is the appointment of three additional alternate members to the Board of Adjustment. I want to remind council, this is not an action section, session. All it is is a work session. So let's start on the right. Mr. Gregory, did you have any thing to say regarding this item on the work session?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, did you have any nominations or anything to say regarding three alternate members of the Board of Adjustment?
Yes, for one, I've only had one person reach out to me and I'd like to nominate John Squire.
John Squire. Was John aware that he's, he has been nominated, sir?
Yes, he is.
Thank you very much. Ms. McLean, did you have anybody or did you want to share anything regarding the alternate members to the Board of Adjustment?
Yes, I do. I would like to have you consider Ian McLean as a member of this committee, or the Board of Adjustment. He, it's not a paid position, so there is no problem with me recommending him. I feel like his skill set would be of value to this body.
Okay. Ms. McLean has nominated the name, which this is not an action, this is not an action item. So Ian McLean, and explain the reasons why it's not a conflict of interest. Ms. Scott, did you have anyone you wanted to move forward?
I did have someone in mind. I had been unable to contact them, but I would like to recommend Adele Rivera.
I have spoke to that gentleman before and he's very interested in getting in touch. All we need from him is a, is a sort of a stamp of approval that, you know, he wants, he wants to do this and he would commit to the office.
I will get back to you with that ASAP, hopefully in the next 24, 48 hours.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino, did you have anyone you'd like to bring forward in this?
No, sir, Mayor. I have not had anybody come up to me, which is what we ask. If you're interested in serving, reach out to us. I would like to add that I have talked to Mr. Rivera and I think that he has a great deal of expertise that he could add. I don't know if he's interested, but if he is, I think that would be great.
Okay. What I'd like to remind council is this is nothing more than a discussion time, that we are, it isn't like an official meeting. And what we're doing up here is we're casually talking about things that are involved in this agenda. So we have John Squire, we have Ian McLean, and we have Adele Rivera. Of course, at the time that we bring this forward on a regular agenda for action items, we will be able to add and subtract. But at this time, we will put these three names down as people who, at least two of them for sure, would like to serve and one of them, it would surprise me if he didn't, would, would like to serve. Okay. A little bit about the Board of Adjustment in less than 20 words. The Board of Adjustment is a board that basically decides adjustments to our current ordinances. What that means is if you'd like a fence set up or something that's outside our ordinance, you bring it before the Board of Adjustment. They handle it in a proper way. I think that's 14 words. And what ends up happening is the Board of Adjustment decides whether or not you're going to get that or not. It can deal with fences, just about anything having to do with municipal law, with the exception of things that would actually, you know, break state law or something like that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item B, which is the discussion in decreasing the employee contribution to TMRS from 7% to 6% and increase the city's current match from 1.5 to 1 to 2 to 1. And I invite Councilman McLean and Scott to forward with anything they'd like to say regarding this.
I'll let Mrs. Scott start.
Okay. I'll gladly start the discussion this evening. I got quite a bit of feedback on this item. A lot of people were asking why. Why did we want to bring this back so quickly and look at it? The reason why is because when it was discussed, well, first of all, the budget is not due until September 30th. So we have till the end of this month to continue to look at and work on budget items. So we still have a few days to look at it. And when this item was originally discussed at the last meeting, there was some incorrect information that was presented. There were some unanswered questions that, people had questions. I honestly had to answer "I don't know" to several questions. And so I wanted to be able to get that information and have the answers to those questions. And at the same time, there was also a lot of speculation that went on regarding this item. So I thought, let's bring it back and let's discuss it this evening. Let's look at the information that was presented originally, make sure that it is accurate. Let's see what, and if any unanswered questions that we had after discussing it, if we can answer them once again accurately and factually. And then that way, there will not be room for any speculation about what will happen regarding this item, but we'll know exactly all about this item and how it affects the city on, on every level. So that is why it was brought back this evening for discussion as part of this workshop. I think another question, and once again, it goes back to why, if I go and delve into the information, some of the information that was given, was we talked about, I heard from several citizens and whatnot, that recruitment and retirement were not an issue as far as possibly increasing the, the matching on the retirement. And so I was hoping to get some discussion going. Is this a point where I can ask people to come up and give more information about these? Okay. So I think I would like to ask, would, is Chief, Chief for here? Could, could you come up and answer questions to ask? It had been relayed to us via some citizen comment, I believe even some council comment, that recruitment and retirement wasn't necessarily an issue, is specifically relating to talking to new recruits in the classroom, what their training kind of pertain to. And I know you do go to, over to the academy. So what do you, what do you experience when you go to the academy?
Simply put, I was here for the council meetings also last, last month. And I was here for the council meetings also last month.
Chief, hang on just a second, if you don't mind. While the chief gets started with this, I want to remind everybody that we are live on Ustream. And would somebody out in cyberspace, please text me and let me know that you're hearing this loud and clear, please? Thank you, Chief. Forgive me for the interruption.
Are we still waiting?
No, go ahead. My phone will blow up in a minute.
Okay. Good. And there is discussion whenever myself and other senior members of the department go to local academies to recruit, pitch our, pitch our deal over here at City of Castle Hills. And it does come up with retirement packages, benefit packages, and we, and we simply provide the information that we have. So it, to answer your question, yes, ma'am, it does come up with our retirement package and benefits. So it's, we have one senior officer here at Castle Hills who actually teaches at the local academies. And, and during mock interviews, the, the trainees visit with the, with the panel, the make, makeup panel, and ask questions, what do, what can you offer us? Years ago, that was not the case. And Mr. McCormick is here in the audience and he's absolutely right. When I applied with the City of Castle Hills in 1997, there was 44 applicants to, to one slot. I did not even care about retirement package at the time or benefit packages. I just wanted a job and, and was happy to have one. But, but times have changed and it is a discussion for new applicants coming in and what can cities offer them? That is a discussion piece. And, and we, and we have to answer those questions and we try to deal with the best we can. So to answer your question, I hope that answered it somewhat. Anything else?
Well, so that has to do with recruitment, but, but this, there has been some comment in citizen emails that I've gotten about retention and retention of employees. And can you speak to whether, whether our current benefits and retirement packages have an effect on our ability to retain officers on our force?
Well, well, obviously, a better benefit package can, can tend to steer an individual to stay longer at a particular location. So it is looked at and it, and it goes into recruitment also. I mean, it, they're one and the same and they mirror each other, actually. So when you have, during the recruitment process, if they know what they're getting into and it's a, and it's a, it's a better deal than, say, your sister city, they're likely to stay a little bit longer. So in retention, but when you have an employee here and a better benefit or retirement package comes up across the, across the aisle, they're more likely to take a second look at that particular benefit package and, and job in general. So it, it goes hand in hand. It does play a part.
So, and when we, when we have an officer leave, you know, I'm assuming there's some cost to that, to the department as far as training and whatnot?
Yes, ma'am. It, it costs a lot to, to train an officer up and get him where he needs to be on his own. You're dealing with two officers typically in the training phase. You have an FTO and then the trainee, so that eliminates some of the efficiency, if you will, for, for the officer to get him up to speed. And it's about a three, four-month process to hire someone from the, from the ground up and get him on the street.
So before you told us that, you know, there were roughly 44 applicants for one position when, when you were applying, what kind of application rate do you have now when you have it? I know we have one opening in the, in the department.
Correct. And last year, I think we had three test dates and I think we had six make it to a board. And this year, I believe we've had about three or, we've had two test dates this year and we've had three, maybe four make it to a panel, none of which that were hired.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to ask you a question that, you know, it just came up when we were doing this. I, I actually have been involved in some of those, not necessarily with the city, but in corporate life. And when you have these job fairs, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. When you have these job fairs, you have tables set up and, and everybody's trying to get everybody to come to their table and then you sit somebody down and you actually talk to them. The question I have is when, and you may have already answered this, but I might be hard of hearing. How, when you sit down and they start talking about the job and what it entails and everything, what percentage of, of the people at, in that age group of 20 to 22, 23, actually ask about retirement?
Well, it, it comes up often. I don't know the percentage, but keep in mind also, Mr. Mayor, that this, at this time, you know, we, we don't have a lot of 21 and 22-year-olds. We have some in the academies, but now you're seeing 30-year-olds, 35, 40-year-olds that are either A, starting a new job field, have retired, getting into it, former military, we're seeing a lot of that. So they're, they're somewhat savvy with, with what's out there and what they, what, what they're looking for in, in a, in a job, in a career.
I'm, I'm not by any way, it means trying to put you on the spot, but what I do know, I'm real good at bringing the elephant in the room. Okay. Let me ask you a question. In your, in your, in your estimation as a chief and being someone out there who has done this, what percentage did you lose because of it?
Again, difficult, difficult to say, sir. I don't want to get hung up on a percentage, but you know, we lose some, we lose officers to, to, to better places or in their eyes, better places.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments for the chief or did you want to start at the other end? This is an informal work session, at least at this point. It's our first time out of the chute, so might speak up.
Well, I'm in the private sector and study after study has shown that people up to about the age of 35 to 40 have little or no interest in retirement benefits. Study after study has shown that people until they get to the age of 35 to 40 have virtually no interest in retirement benefits, where above 40, they do. One reason they don't have as much interest is there are so many other available options today, available for anybody when they can start out at 21, that were not available 20, 30, and 40 years ago. People have to remember, the IRA wasn't even into, in existence until Ronald Reagan brought it in. So there are an enormous number of retirement variable options out there for people. They can start at 20 if they want to, or 21 or 30. It's obvious that when you're in your twenties and early thirties, you're more interested in dating and your salary and enjoying life. When you get older, you grow up and you're more interested in finding the right person, start a family, work hard. So I don't think, as many studies though have shown, in the private sector, you do not have a great deal of interest in retirement under 35 to 40. You have an increasing interest in 35 to, over 35 to 40. And if we, if we try to start trying to compete with DPS or San Antonio or Alamo Heights or Live Oak where they have a racetrack, or as I say, Alamo Heights have their own water system, we'll never compete. So we've tried to make up with substantially stronger salaries as well as free health care. And I'll tell you, in the private sector, you have to, it's like finding hen's teeth to find somebody who'll say, we'll give the employees free, tax-free health care. That's, I don't know any place in the private sector. Anyway, that's all my observation.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul, did you have anything to add to this conversation, sir?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. Number one, we discussed the recruitment, et cetera, when we made the decision two weeks ago, so that was on the table at the time. And still, the decision was made three to two. Secondly, there may be some additional information, there may be some things that need to be discussed further. That may be the case. We, we finished the budget. Ms. Scott said that, well, we have till the end of the month. Well, we finished the budget early and the budget's done and it was done through an ordinance and I don't see why we are trying to redo it. I strongly suggest that if there's anything new, any new information, it'd be brought back next July before the budgets, workshops next summer. Otherwise, you know, there's some things that didn't go my way the last three or four months, I guess I can just start bringing them forward. And they weren't budget items, there were other things. I have the respect of the council, the council made the decision, the time to do something like this. If there's additional information needed, it should be done next spring, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Did you want to follow up, Ms. McLean?
I wanted to clarify a couple of things, Chief. How long has our 20th spot been open, that we've been trying to fill that last spot?
There was a, there was a brief period about two years ago, maybe 18 months where we were full for about four months, and then we lost them and we've been trying to fill that slot for, well, since then.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Trevino, did you have anything to add to this conversation, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Chief, you seem to be a pretty big advocate of this. What do you have to gain as a future retiree?
It does no benefit to me.
So it doesn't affect you at all?
No, sir.
So why are you pushing for it?
Well, pushing it is a relative. I support the, the movement, or at least the taking a stronger look at this, which we've been talking about it since I've been employed here. I serve at the will of the council and the mayor and the city manager and I try to conduct our, our business appropriately. But when my opinion's asked for what's important for our staff and our officers and that can capitalize on maybe capturing a better employee, one that's going to stick around, one that's going to want to do 20 years at a city, I think, I think that small variable in a large equation of benefits could put us in stiffer competition with the sister city. So I, I think it is important in that area. The City of Castle Hills and employees are certainly grateful for all the benefits that we do receive. There's nothing that we can ever take away and I've been thrilled to death that I've worked here for 20 years. But when we have, there's one piece of a variable that, that 26 other cities may have and we don't, we need to take a look at that little piece of a variable in that equation and see if we can adjust it or approach it. It'll, it'll, it could pay dividends long-term for the City of Castle Hills.
And you're, how many years of experience?
Twenty-two.
In your 22 years of experience, do you believe that adding this benefit would provide a better service to the residents?
Yes, I do. And I can explain how.
Please.
Because you're going to have, have a chance and an opportunity to keep an employee longer, capture one earlier, and have the loyalty that the citizens of this town probably want and expect to have. And I just hate to see us miss that opportunity for the staff or for the, for the employees or for the citizens and the employees, if, if it's feasible. If it's not feasible, we accept that. There's, there's, like I said, I'm thrilled to have worked here and, and I'm thankful for the benefits the City of Castle Hills has provided. But since you asked my opinion, there you have it.
One last question. How old is Officer Lemon?
Twenty-two.
He seems pretty interested in his retirement. Are you?
And he's single, too, but.
Okay. Thank you.
He did go to A&amp;M, so.
Yeah, but, and, and Officer Lemon is certainly a blessing for the citizens of this city. He's, he's a very good hand and I hope he sticks around.
I have one more question. Is this the first time that this has been brought up, that it's been made aware to council that, that two to one would benefit the city? Is this the first year that this has been brought up?
It's been talked, no, ma'am.
Would, has it been discussed longer than five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I say it's been something that's been, you know, respectfully asked of council to discuss and look at for, you know, long, maybe close to 10 years?
I have heard it in the, in, in the, my employment circle since I've started here, whether it was from employees to council to citizenry to drifting back and forth, somewhere in between.
Okay. So this suddenly just isn't a new issue that's just come up right now. It's something that has been being discussed back and forth between when people come and ask, is there anything we can do to improve benefits for the city employees? This is something that keeps, has been an answer to that question for a while?
It, it's been a common theme amongst employees, if that's, if that answers your question to some degree. This is the first time it's actually been brought before council and a budget process.
Well, I know, because that was one of my questions as I, you know, discussed and, and was, was running, you know, what, you know, what could, could be improved? Because that's, that's one thing, what could be improved, ask citizens what could be improved? And I asked, considering part of my job on council is to be a good employer, employees, what could be improved? And it was brought up. And so that's why I was curious, if this was new or if this is something that has been.
It's, it's been in the discussion circles for a long time.
For, for many years. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Cap, Chief. Yes? Oh, Douglas, go ahead.
Chief, isn't it true, the previous six city managers excluding the current one have extensively, as preceding six city managers, since I've been on council, off and on since 2003, have thoroughly discussed this? And all of them have come to the conclusion, it would be a very difficult thing for the city to do economically. Not that they didn't want to, because I was appointed several years ago to try to figure out if we could give the employees when they left zero coupon bonds or an annuity. We went to TMRS, of course, they have a vested interest in us not doing that. And they said, oh, no, you can't do that. You only can do certain things. So this has been widely discussed, discussed with the previous, excluding this one, six city managers. And they have all come to the conclusion. And they have all come to the conclusion, it was not to the benefit of the city that this go forth in its present form. I just wanted to let Mrs. Scott know a little history.
Mr. Gregory, I have a question about that. Were they discussing six percent at two to one or were they discussing seven percent at two to one? Because there's a drastic difference between the two. And currently we're at a seven percent, one and a half to one. And I question which one of those? Because you're talking apples and ostriches between the difference at seven, two to one, and six, two to one.
And each city manager discussed what was available at the time. The full extent of whatever was possible at the time. There was no limiting of what they could look at or discuss. And as treasurer of the city throughout all that time, I listened to the employees, I listened to the city manager, I listened to what they, and what could, we're a small city. What we can and can't do and what we can absorb long-term and what we find difficult to absorb. And the previous six city managers all said with the, at the time, it would not be a benefit to the city whatsoever. And it is very interesting, we haven't had it for all the time that I've been here, and we have the caliber of who we have right now speaks to the point that we can get top-flight caliber people, regardless of using your words, this little aspect of the entire benefit package. I think if we look at the present police department, it's clear we have top-flight people. That this didn't defer the one vacant spot that we have difficulty filling. I remember at times we'd have one or two. But that varies from year to year to year. But what I'm saying is the quality of the police and fire departments that we have not right now speaks to the point, we can have one and one half to whatever, and we can still recruit top-quality people. And the facts speak for themselves.
Douglas, I agree that we have top-quality people, but I'm worried about keeping those in the future. I'm looking and I'm seeing that we have one spot. I don't want one spot to become two spots. I don't want the chief to have to lower his standards for who he's hiring because a bad employee would be more expensive than the sixty-four thousand dollar difference we have next year.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I hear all this and I kind of agree with Councilman Douglas, Gregory, sorry, Douglas, about we are fortunate to have the people we have. And I understand where the chief is coming from. On a, on a minimum basis, we're talking again about something that we did two weeks ago and came to a decision. Again, if there's anything new or any reason that we feel something should happen, it should come back and fully be vetted in July. I believe myself for one and possibly somebody else asked the question in the, in the original budget meetings, what is it that we don't know? What is it we're trying to learn? Nobody had accurate information. We worked on what we had. And you see all these numbers going around, it's going, and, and I did some numbers on my own, and I know they're not accurate, but I do know it's going to cost us, if we try to do that, an extra fifty to seventy-five thousand, depending on which level you go at a year. Couple that with the ninety-five thousand dollars that we aren't going to get because of the recent tax freeze, plus the infrastructure needs that we do have, we can fix a honeysuckle out here probably for fifty thousand dollars. And that place coming to our city hall, to me, is a disgrace. So again, I, I don't know why we're even talking about this.
And Mr. Mayor, it is good to remember, this is now the fourth bite of the apple we've had on this issue. We had a long, long, almost hour-long discussion of this on August the twenty-fourth, another discussion on September the seventh, another discussion on the eighteenth, when we passed a budget. We didn't pass a preliminary budget. We passed a budget, period. And now we're looking at it for a fourth time. To me, I agree with Mr. Paul a hundred percent. I think this, the time and the place for this is at the next budget meeting next summer. And we will have plenty of time to have all sorts of numbers from one person or another to prove this point or that. And, but this is not the time to go back and change the budget now, to use words of somebody around here, it's sort of bait and switch. I didn't vote for that budget. I mean, I voted for the budget, but I didn't get everything I wanted to. There were several things in there I couldn't stand. But I took the overall view of the budget and I said, I'm going to vote for it. And there've been budgets in the past that couldn't vote for no matter what, and I voted no. But this one, we put it to bed last time. And to bring it back now, I think is severely wrong.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank you, chief. If you'd like to go ahead and sit down, I think we're done with questions.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, we, we did look at the budget. It was, the proposed budget was proposed with this included in it. So it has been in all of the proposed budgets through all of the workshops that we have looked at. All of the numbers were calculated using the two to one, using all of the things that, that were on that list that we looked at and discussed. And like I said, this one item that seemed to really concern everyone was over the unfunded liability. And that is where I, we had questions that weren't answered. We didn't have the answers to them at that time. We now have answers to them, and that's why we're having this discussion. And I think this might be a good time to go ahead and ask, we, we have with us Ms. Leslie Hardy from TMRS, who can explain completely what the unfunded liability is on our, on the, on the proposed budget and how it works and how this unfunded liability that we currently have of two, it's a little over two million dollars, that would increase to two-point-two, I have that number right here, that currently at our seven percent, one and a half to two, that we currently have an unfunded actuarial liability of two million, ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. And that when we were discussing whether or not to vote for or against this item at six percent, two to one, that it would increase our unfunded liability to two million, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. During that discussion, it was brought up that that was the only one year that could be told what that actual number was going to be. And it was conjectured and speculated that that number could suddenly grow and get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And suddenly, that marker could be called in from TMRS and suddenly we could owe three million or five million or ten million dollars to TMRS, suddenly one day out of the blue that is going to bankrupt and throw our city down the rabbit hole. And I was unable to fully answer that because at the time I did not have the amortization schedule of that unfunded liability and was unable to answer those questions. So I called Ms. Hardy because I wanted to find out, what are the answers to those questions? Because they, they kind of took me by surprise at the time and I wanted to know what are the answers. And I believe she is the most qualified person, being the actuary, that developed this to let us know what exactly is our unfunded liability? How much will it cost us over the years? Can it suddenly increase dramatically? And will you call that marker in one day out of the blue?
Ms., hi, Ms. Hardy.
Hi.
Would you, would you introduce yourself and let us know a little bit about your position there at TMRS?
Certainly. Excuse me, thank you for having me, first of all, and thank you, mayor, and all the council members for your willingness to serve. I am here to try to explain about, well, I am the director, sorry, I'm the director of Actuarial Services at Texas Municipal Retirement System. I, so basically that makes me their in-house actuary. I'm the liaison between the board, the staff, and all of our member cities in all areas of actuarial and their basically contribution rates and their funding of the plan. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about if, about the funding policy at, at TMRS because it's, it's something that we're very proud of. Now, I'm, I'm not going to go into all the details of, of that, that document that you have. But I want you to know that, because there, there's a lot of focus on unfunded liabilities and out-of-control unfunded liabilities, because you, you read in the papers, we have a lot of, of some of these sister cities, all of which are not in TMRS. Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, none of those cities that are in trouble are in TMRS. And the ones that you read about in the paper. And there's a big distinction because we advance fund the benefits over the active working career of the employees. That is the goal of our funding policy. It's the primary objective of our funding policy. So that's very important. We started doing this back in two thousand and seven, and we have reflected all of the future benefits for your current employees. We value those. We're a hybrid plan, which means we have elements of a defined contribution plan, which is the employee deposits plus the employer match at retirement. They only get the match if they retire. And then those are annuitized. So that's how we determine the benefit in a cash balance plan. It's based on that hypothetical cash balance. The employee money plus the employer matching monies plus any upbitted service credits, which all have that additional element. Those all added together, I'll call that the total reserves, the total cash balance. That is the amount that we then annuitize. So in TMRS, that is how the monthly, the lifetime annuity is calculated. So unlike a pure defined benefit plan, these, these, these benefits, as you can tell right now, you're in TMRS, it's all about local control. You, as the council, have the opportunity to set the level of benefits. Okay? It's, it's one of the beauties of TMRS. It is also, like I said, we advance fund these benefits over the active career of the employees. The goal of our funding policy is to make certain that we have set aside with the city contributions enough money to pay all of the future benefits of those employees when they retire. And it's actually working. These changes that we made in two thousand and seven are working. The city of Castle Hills, when we made these changes in, in two thousand and seven, their unfunded liability was three million dollars. Their funded ratio was sixty-three percent. Over the last nine years, their unfunded liability has now been brought down systematically to two million dollars and their funded ratio is eighty-eight percent. Our policy requires that that unfunded liability will be paid off because our amortization periods are closed. Unlike the systems that have problems, it's because they do not have contributions that are actuarially determined. Our statute requires that the city of Castle Hills and all other cities in TMRS pay the actuarially determined contribution. Every year, that amortization period goes down by one year, and that is how we determine the rate. So that unfunded will be paid off over the remainder of its amortization period. Now, can it change from year to year? Yes. Will the additional two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars that is associated with this potential benefit increase, if that decision were made, it will be amortized over twenty-five years. It will be paid off. Now, that will increase your rate, as you can see, and it would require additional contributions. And I would never even pretend to opine as to what a city's, you know, level of appropriate benefits or contributions are. Obviously, those are always city decisions. But our funding policy is by design, designed to promote intergenerational equity. We want the taxpayers to be paying for the services that are provided. That is why we fund all the benefits over the careers of the employees. So I don't, I don't know if you have any specific questions about our funding policy, but I, I did want you to know that, that the rate is determined to make that happen. Now, can that two million dollars become three million in one year? You would have to lose, you know, all of your assets for that to happen. Is that very likely? No. I would not, you know, I'm not going to pretend to say, well, you know, the, the whole world could collapse and then everybody's in trouble and we probably have a, a lot to worry about. But, but I, but I don't want you to think that it's out of control because we require the contributions. The contribution rate will determine, it will pay off that unfunded liability and that benefit increase in, over the amortization period. Because it's just like a mortgage payment, our amortization periods are closed. And it's, the closed amortization periods is the very important part of our funding policy. We are highly regarded in, in, around the state and the country in terms of how strong our funding policy is. And the Texas Pension Review Board certainly holds us as a model to be mimicked. So I, I just wanted to address how the amortization was handled. I, I don't know if you have other, other questions for me. There is a graph about that UAL runoff. I just wanted to show that there is a plan, that is the schedule, just like you have a mortgage payment, that we will determine the rate that makes that happen. So you may not be able to afford the rate if the unfunded liability increases due to experience different than expected. Then that, that piece that, of the experience will be amortized over a, a new twenty-five-year period. All the remaining unfunded goes down at its regular. We use the process of laddering. So the current unfunded stays on its ladder, it's at twenty-three years currently. This benefit increase would be amortized over its own on a twenty-five-year period. And the sum of those two amounts is how we determine your per-service rate. But it is designed to make your funded ratio go to a hundred percent and to be paid off at the end of that period.
In the material I read, it kept talking about assumed, assumed. And so there is possibilities that it can go the other way, and that's where you get the additional monies that we're owed. You know, I don't have any problem with your explanation. I don't truthfully understand everything you just said, and that's one of my problems. You weren't here, not blaming you, I'm blaming the way we handled it. And this is why I keep saying that if you have all this information, we have all this information, we need to have this information to discuss it before our next budget. And that is what's, I guess, still frustrating me. We have a budget that we've approved, and this is through no fault of yours. I'm not blaming you, you're here to, to help and assist and understanding. But quite frankly, in my little limited knowledge, it's going to take me more than ten or fifteen minutes to understand what you just said. Thank you.
Okay. Douglas?
One thing I've learned, being in the investment industry for almost forty years, I agree with that commercial from Fisher Associates. He will never do annuities, he'll go to hell first before he ever does annuities. And why is that? Because annuities have a way of biting you many times with situations you can never figure out. It bit Castle Hills when we had the recession in nine and ten severely because we had to pony up a lot of money and we have to continue to pony up a lot of money due to the inaccurate assumptions that were made by the actuarial people. With one of the, and it was remarkable, some of the assumptions, but they were just flat-out wrong and it skewed all the numbers. I'm not saying that people don't do the best efforts they can to get the numbers correct, but it is not gospel. Now, one thing you said over and over again, which has been said before, as I say, this is the fourth time we've heard these various things, our amount we would have to pay would go up if your numbers are wrong. And that's true. We see an increase right now going from forty-something thousand dollars to fifty-something thousand dollars just this year in this budget that we've got to pay off in an attempt to pay down the, the amount of money that we will owe over twenty-five years. It's interesting what you have in here because you, am I correct to saying that you have in, in part of this, some elements of a defined contribution in this plan or not?
Yes. The defined contribution elements are, are the, the employee deposits plus that, that the benefit is based on employee deposits plus the employer match at retirement. The, so, so that's the defined contribution element of it. It's not a separate plan, it is a defined benefit plan. It's a, it's a, TMRS is a cash balance plan and it is considered a defined benefit plan because it pays a lifetime annuity.
Am I correct hearing you that Houston does not have this? Dallas does not have this. Does Austin have it?
No.
Does San Antonio have it?
No. San Antonio is in TMRS. Yes, they are.
Okay. Does Corpus Christi have it?
Yes.
So Corpus Christi is of the five cities, of major cities, is the only one that has it?
Corpus and San Antonio are two largest cities in TMRS.
But Houston isn't, and Dallas is?
Houston is not, Dallas is not, Fort Worth is not, Austin is not, El Paso is not, Galveston is not. So most of the larger cities, with the exception of San Antonio, are, are not in TMRS. But I wanted to address that most of those plans are pure defined benefit plans. And what I mean by that is their benefit is determined by a percent of payroll, like two percent per year of service times final average pay. That's how their benefit is determined. Our benefit in TMRS is determined by, as I mentioned, that cash balance. So the longer that you work, if you're, if you're twenty years old, if you're twenty, worked twenty years and you retire at forty, then your benefit is going to be much lower than this person that works the exact twenty years, makes the exact earnings, but retires at sixty. Their benefit's going to be higher. Whereas in a pure DB plan, they would both get the same. Whereas in a pure DB plan, they would both get the same dollar amount. But in TMRS, it's spread out over the remainder of your life expectancy. So that's the cash balance part. So it's somewhat of a leveling experience in terms of the benefit. It's based on the value at retirement of your count plus the city match and how long you're expected to live.
You know, it's also very interesting to me that the elements of the annuity includes the stock and bond markets.
We have a fully diversified portfolio.
You have right now, a curious thing that rarely has ever heard, occurred in history. You have the bond market at an all-time high. Yields are almost at a historic all-time low. And the stock market at an all-time high. Something's got to give.
Correct.
Something's got to give. And all these numbers that we, we're going into the mix right now are based, I believe, from what we've been told in the past, on a rosy scenario. And, and once again, Mr. Mayor, this goes to the point of why we should not be talking about this now. This is a very complicated topic. We, even though we, even though this is the fourth time it's come before the council, this is something that should be brought back at the appropriate time, at the appropriate place, and that is next year when we're discussing this at the budget. So many questions can be talked about and discussed. You obviously have a clear understanding of what you're talking about. But I defy almost anybody on this council to know exactly what you're talking about. I probably have the most use of what you're talking about and can understand some of it. But this is the wrong place and definitely the wrong time. And to, once, because once we change, we can't change back. It, it, because it's virtually impossible to have people say, we're not going to do this. Do you, I have one interesting, one question. We're at two to one and most large cities don't have, most large cities don't have this type of plan that you're proposing. How long did it take for municipalities to get to 2% from 1 and 1/2? And was, did, were they at one and then go to 1 and 1/2 and then they went to two?
For the most part, they join at 5%, 1 to 1, and then they slowly work their way up to, to a, to a 2 to 1.
So it's more likely than not that you're, once you get this, it's going to be a push somewhere in the near future. Well, if two's good, three's better.
Well, we don't have that option. It, there's only a 1 to 1, 1 and 1/2 to 1 and 2 to 1 that's available in TMRS.
But if it changes, as it has changed in the past, will be, cities be faced with, well, golly, we've got to go to three because Bud Tussle has gone from 2 to 3 and we have to do what they're doing? And it seems like it, it really throws a lot of the numbers and really screws a lot of the numbers up, but I'm not sure. I need a lot more study on that.
The level of benefits certainly is a local option. It's a local control. And you're, you can, and future councils could certainly reduce the matching ratio at any time. And, and that's, that's not uncommon. It's not real common. Most cities were actually working their way up.
I'm not talking about the matching ratio.
But you can, you can, you can, a future council, if you went to 2 to 1, they could definitely, they could, they can eliminate all, all sorts of benefits. That, in TMRS, the city, individual cities are the ones who get to decide the appropriate level of benefits.
Well, but the reality tells you that no city council is going to go backwards from 2 to 1 and 1/2.
They have. They have. It's usually, it's usually based on a cost factor. You know, if they need to, if they, if they can't afford, if they can't afford their current level of benefits, then they've reduced their benefits in, in, in many instances.
So that's where we are now. Once again, Mayor, it's just the wrong time. This is very complicated, even though this is the fourth time it's been brought forth and we have voted on the budget already.
Thank you, Douglas. Mr. Trevino, you've been pretty quiet over there. We've got a, sort of a thing that we talked about, that it was, we would, we would do an hour on this. So we're, you know, we've got 25 minutes left, so. Mr. Trevino, do you have anything else you wanted to say or?
Yes, Mayor, I had a question. And as I understood, it has to pass with a 2/3 vote?
Yes. So any benefits, your, your upbated service credit percent, your COLA percent, your annuity increase percent, the retirement, post-retirement, your matching ratio, those, all of those benefits can be reduced at any, at any time by council ordinance. The employee deposit rates cannot be reduced by council ordinance only. It does require a 2/3 votes to, of the employees to reduce the employee deposit rate. But nothing else requires employee votes. So matching ratio can be changed by council at any time, as could your annuity increases or your upbated service credit percent.
Got you. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have any other comments?
I believe I've had my answer, my question answered.
Okay. Ms. McLean?
I do have one, one thing that I'd like you to clarify. Mr. Gregory stated that back in 2008, 2009, after the fabulous little crisis we had in the, in the economy, that, that the city was required to, that there was, there was an extra payment or something that was required. But you had stated that in 2007, TMRS started on an advanced, an advanced funding policy regarding this. Would that have been the cause of that payment since?
That increase was, was, the 2007 increases did increase the accrued liabilities, but he was referring, I believe, to the assets. And in TMRS in 2007, we were 100% fixed income portfolio. We were named the pension plan sponsor of the year because whereas many systems were in stocks and lost 30 to 40% of their portfolio, our return was negative 1%. So we, the plan, the plan sponsor of the year for 2009. And then when we started diversifying our portfolio in 2008 to start acquiring some bonds in 2009, rather, we were very fortunate that we were buying when the stocks were, were at the bottom. So we actually were very fortunate that we were still 100% fixed income portfolio in 2008.
Douglas, you sounded like you want to say something.
You said that you were in 100% fixed income in 2007 and 2008.
Yes, sir.
What gave you the authority to change?
We had a law passed and it was House Bill 360 that was passed in 2009 when we started it with the legislature. So we did have to go to the legislature to have, to get the authority to be able to invest in other assets and to recognize basically, you know, appreciation in those assets.
What are the other assets?
We are, and we have real assets. We currently, right now, our target asset allocation is, we have core fixed income is at about 20, 17 and 1/2%. We have US equities at 17 and 1/2, non-US equities at 17 and 1/2, real return, real estate, private equity at 5%, absolute return at 10% and then a non-core fixed income at 20. So it's a highly diversified portfolio. We have a whole team of investment staffs that manage the portfolios with external managers. And obviously, I'm, you know, I'm not one of the investment professionals.
And you all have the legislative authority to change the percentages whenever you want?
The board, we had the legis, that is a board, yes. Once we have the ability to invest in these assets, which we do now, the board determines in conjunction with our investment staff, the appropriate asset allocation. And then our investment return assumption is based on the capital markets associated with our asset allocation. And our long-term investment return assumption right now is 6.75, which is one of the lowest in the country, based on a very conservative assumption, we believe.
One of the things that the investment world has moved very strongly to right now is they use the catchword diversification. And that's a two-edged sword. You have 17% non-US assets currently. Is that correct?
Our allocation to non-US equities is 17.5%.
Do you use derivatives?
I, I can't answer. I don't, I'm not, I'm the investment team. I don't know. I don't, but I don't think that we're allowed to use derivatives. I think the answer to that.
But you don't know, but you might use derivatives.
I don't think we do.
Because a lot of pension funds, one reason that a lot of things happened in nine and 10, especially in Pennsylvania and a few other states, Illinois is suffering from it now, they went to diversification and they moved to all sort of esoteric investments. I remember very clearly back in 1970, and I remember because this happened to a member of my family, the thing that was the hot investment that there were REITs. And I noticed you have real property, which is basically, I assume that's a REIT.
We have, we have real estate investment trusts.
You do have REITs.
As others. And I, like I said, you would need to go and, and I can get our investment team to address the details of what's all involved in the different asset classes. I'm not the one that's the expert in that.
I understand, I understand. It's very interesting that REITs have become popular again because the last time they were this popular, REITs collapsed absolutely. And the best one in the country was Cameron Brown and that declared bankruptcy. And no matter what REIT you had in there, you were slaughtered. So the, the diversification on the surface sounds, we're protected, we're safe, but it also brings the increased possibility of a lot of problems going wrong. But I'm not really sure what we would be buying into. You can switch the percentages at will. You can move the assets around as will.
Well, no, they can't. They, it's, they're, we have an investment policy statement that is done by the board and these, 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 these percentages are defined by our board and they have parameters around which they can move. So they, they cannot do that at their will. It has to be board-approved.
How often does the board, how often does the board have the legislative ability to change?
Well, the, the board contains at, at, based on action at any board meeting. We look at our asset allocation once every three years in a very deep dive. We look at it every year as to see how it's performing relative to what we think. And then every five years, we do a deep dive asset liability study. But our investment team is highly qualified and I, you know, don't have any reason to believe that, that, that we can't make our assumed rate of return over, over the long term.
Well, almost anybody in the last four or five years can be a genius because the bond market's been up since 1980 and the stock market's been up since 2010. So almost anybody can look brilliant when the, you couldn't have made a loss. But I find this just extremely interesting, what you, what you actually have here. I mean, this, this.
Well, we're, we're, we're up, you know, almost 10% year-to-date. So, you know, it's turning out to be a good year so far. So, but like I said, I, you're right. I don't, I don't ever count my chickens till they're hatched.
Well, as one of my clients said, he said, are we putting the money on red today or are we putting it on black?
Thank you, Douglas. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the representative? Any comments? Any thoughts? Just so you know, anybody who signed up for this item will be able to speak during the second portion of this. This is a workshop, kind of learning as we go on this. So you will have the opportunity to speak.
Mayor Howell, I would like to make a comment. You know, Mrs. Scott and I brought this back to council because I believe the vote was directly related to speculation from up here on the dais and by citizens regarding exponentially ballooning responsibilities into this fund. And Mrs. Hardy's been able to show us that we have a very, very concise payoff schedule to where we are paying into our retirement fund and funding it as we need it so that it would avoid getting a call for a million dollars one day. But every budget workshop and every public hearing we had, the budget information that was put out to everyone was based on a 6% 2 to 1 matching with a 2% COLA to the employees. And every single one of those budgets that was put out at each one of the meetings with those criteria netted us a surplus budget of over $100,000, even taking into account adding the new allocation for passport office and the increases in salaries that were given to several employees outside of the 2% COLA. Every single workshop and every single public hearing, we had over $100,000 of surplus money, even taking into account giving this extra benefit to our employees.
Is there anybody else on council who would like to say some final words, please?
Yeah, just one last thing. We can hypothesize, we can guess, we can do whatever as long as we're sitting up here. But again, I believe we need more of a detailed analysis next July before the budget. Now, that being said, I know somebody, some may not know it, but I'm a little familiar with businesses. I can make a business show a profit, but I can't just pull cash out of the air and put in the business. Point being is, is any of these changes right now, it is going to cause a cash injection, a cash flow for this city. And right now, until we solve these other issues and look at these other issues, see how much the loss of this is going to cost or the loss of 95 is going to cost us, or we're, we're getting ready to spend some more money on the streets and infrastructure. We have neglected as a city that for years. In fact, as I understand it, the best I can tell since we've been here. And we have, in the last two years, three years, we have worked on 24 streets, 12 Reclamite and 12 Millen overlay. So we got to keep that program going and that's what we tell people that we want and that's what we're going to do. But right now, again, we've, we've passed the budget and I'm just not for this. Thank you.
Ms. McLean, did you have any comments?
I do. Streets and drainage are very important to the city. But my worry is that instead of talking about streets and drainage in 10 years, if that's all we focus on exclusively for the next 10 years, is we're going to be discussing why we have two policemen and three firemen or that we've got a crisis with our employees or we haven't been able to maintain the, the services that our citizens enjoy and expect. And so we can't be so single-minded. We have to figure out how to look at everything. You can't focus on one thing to the exclusion of everything else. And the employees, to speak to that, just from our two ladies who work in the court, they bring in over a million dollars a year in income to the city. The police department has brought in the step program and the warrant program, which has brought in several hundred thousand dollars and is expected to bring in the same amount. Our employees are very diligent, they're hardworking and they deserve to be treated fairly. We, as a council, we're an employer. We're not just representing the citizens. We have five different duties that we, we have to balance. One of them, yes, is we were elected by the citizens to make public policy that has to do with what the citizens want. We're regulators. We regulate people and property. We're financiers. We collect taxes. We charge fees. We collect money for our courts through the police department, through where, Public Works. We're an employer. We're expected to pay fair wages. We haven't even gotten to a discussion about where we fall on the pay, pay scales with benefits and, and with salaries. We're expected to pay fair, fair wages, give decent work environment, provide fringe benefits. These are all things that, and we're also a, a buyer of goods. We're a purchaser as a city. We buy things. So we've got a lot of things we have to balance. I agree, streets and drainage are very important and some people are affected by it more than others. But no one, the, the budget for next year takes all those things into account and it took this particular retirement package, the 6% at 2 to 1, was in every single budget, provided a surplus that could be used for whatever we needed to add it towards the streets program. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Scott, did you have any final statements or things to comment on, please?
I think it has been covered, other than I did have a statement by Mr. Gregory that I, left me a little curious. Do you correct me if I had this wrong? But you mentioned that in recruiting, back to the recruiting, that we offered benefits like medical and other benefits that were better than other communities our size that would help with recruitment? That's not what you said? Okay.
So he said stronger salaries and free health care.
Stronger salaries and free health, health care are the benefits that we're offering to them that makes our city more attractive than another city to, to go work for.
They are certainly very attractive benefits and that's why I'm curious why you want to go down to 6% contribution, then up to 7% contribution? Because a 7% contribution goes better to help the employee than a 6% contribution. But anyway.
Folks, we're getting to the end of this. Let's not get into a discussion back and forth on semantics because it'll come up later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
This is a workshop, folks. Mr. Trevino, final comments?
I, I do have a couple of quick questions for the lady from TMRS. If, if this were to pass and we changed If, if this were to pass and we changed it, was it effective that year?
If you, if you adopted a new deposit, deposit rating matching ratio, it would become effective January 1, 2018. And then it, you only match the contributions that start coming in at 6% instead of 7%, so it is prospective only. So you would match 2:1 only on the contributions that began January 1, 2018 at 6%. The contributions that have been made at 7% in the past would continue to be matched at retirement at 100 half to 1.
Got you. And the, the increase year over year would only be affected by the increase in salaries, is that correct?
That is correct. You're talking about the increase in their account.
Yes.
But see, I'm, we are already projecting that in their future benefits, so that's already reflected. All of the increases are already reflected in the liabilities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Okay, this, we're about six minutes out, out to the hour, and is, I think this has been a pretty productive workshop, I think you've, you've brought some things forward that we didn't, we didn't have before. So with that said, we are going to, hey, and by the way, thanks for everybody letting me know out there in Cyberland, you can stop now. Phone's going nuts. Okay, so it is now 7:55, and we're, we are adjourning the work session. And Mr. Brennan, do we have a motion for that, or do I just go right into convening into the special meeting?
I think it's on the agenda, just move right on into the special meeting.
Thank you. All right, it is now 8:56, and we will, Feb. 7, okay. And we will now move into the special session. Thanks again, everyone who texted in, I appreciate it, special meeting, okay? Can you hear me out there in Cyberland? I heard the dean, they can hear. First of all, I'd like to say something. If you look at these walls up here, you'll see 16 previous mayors. At the end of the day, all 16 represented our citizens and have done, in my estimation, a pretty good job. We're still here, we're not swallowed up by San Antonio. No, we're not bankrupt, and guess what? The sky is falling, and there's plenty of gas over its shell. As the mayor, I'm constantly presented with different options, ideas, thoughts, statements, et cetera, backed up by, that's what the law says, that's what everybody's saying, and the like. Also, when presented new information to put on the agenda, I have chosen to let the representatives you elected present their case for that agenda item. If I don't particularly believe the item is in the best interest of the city at that time, or it be one that would be too aggressive in the process, I then ask the alderman or alderwoman who brought it forward to seek support from one of his or her peers. If two aldermen request an issue to be considered, it becomes mandatory to move forward with that item and the process through our attorney. If three, that statement's a no-brainer. I don't have a choice, it has to go forward. And I, as your mayor, will never stop an elected official in this city, if it's two or more, fight to make sure that they don't get their word heard. That's the democratic process. When meeting with our paid council, he has indicated that with the hurdles involved, the perception of changing the budget at the last minute would not be a prudent judgment. One power the mayor does have is to decide whether or not an item to be discussed is held for action at a later date. And with that said, I'm pulling item 6 for consideration tonight off the special agenda item, but leaving it on the agenda for discussion, for people to speak, to state what they've heard based on the new information we've had, but it will not be an action item for next year's budget in this particular meeting. Anyone who brought this forward at this time can override me, that's the democratic process. I have five people sitting behind me who could call a point of order at any minute and say, "Mayor, we're not going to do that, we think that we can push this thing forward." And at that time, as soon as I finish, I would invite them to do so. Because at this time, I believe it's important for the stability of our city to move this to when our budget comes up next time. As I've said before, you will find nobody, nobody in this city that cares more about our employees than myself. And some of you know why. Some of you know that I put my money where my mouth is, some of you don't, but those of you that do, know. So with that said, by no means am I challenging my colleagues up here, but I think that it would be best, based on the recommendations of our council, which I, many of you know, get frustrated with me, I'm not going to do anything unless the council says so, I mean, our paid council says so. I've been chewed out, I don't know how many times, I'm used to it. But this time, I'm listening. So with that said, I invite anyone at this time to call a point of order and to move forward with the process. Thank you, council, I appreciate that. In our democratic process, I praise the two or three aldermen that have brought this forward for discussion. It furthers the democratic process. Further, I would ask that when an item like this comes up, where it is proposed, and it concerns the future of our employees, as well as the fiduciary responsibility of the council, that we reach out through a special committee to help ensure that the right input, the citizenry input, the council input, is obtained to make the best decisions affecting our city in the future. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, for suggesting that idea, I'll give credit where credit's I can't say again how proud I am of the two and three aldermen that brought this into the democratic process. This is what it's all about, folks. Nobody's here to win a popularity contest, this is a business. It's a business where we have residents, we have employees, we have admin, we've got management, and then you've got a leader. And that lady would rather darn well do his job and stick to what the law is, or you don't have a leader. All right, let's move on. Okay, the City of Castle Hills mayoral proclamation. Whereas the City of Castle Hills Police Department sponsors a national community building campaign on October 3, 2017, and the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in your city to join over 38 million people in 16,000 communities across 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, military bases worldwide. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make the neighborhood safer and more caring places to live. Whereas the neighbors of your city and the city assist the local law, excuse me, the And this enforcement agency through joint community building efforts support National Night Out 2017. It is essential that our community come together with the city's first responders to build a safer, more caring community. I, Timothy A. Howell, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, do hereby call upon our community members to support National Night Out on Tuesday, September 3, 2017. Let it here be resolved that I, Timothy A. Howell, Mayor, signed. Do in fact make that Tuesday, October 3, 2017, as National Night Out in the City of Castle Hills. Last year, we had, I believe, 13 families in all parts of the city where we had a great time. I was asked by one of them, Shevsky, over in the gardens, he thinks his is the best. So with that said, I would hope everybody goes by there because he asked me to say so. And I want to thank everyone that, that participates in that, and we have a great time, the fire trucks come by, the little kids get to crawl all over it, it is a great time and time for us to come together. With that said, thank you very much, everyone. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consider an ordinance, 2017-0926A, approving the FY 2018 budget adopted by the Crime Control and Prevention District. Do I have a motion, please?
So move the motion.
Thank you, Douglas. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this? Thank you very much, let's do a vote, please, all in favor. Thank you, it is unanimous, let's move on to item 2, consider an act upon the ordinance 2017-09-26B, authorizing the city manager to sign an automatic agreement for emergency firefighting assistance from the City of Hollywood Park. Mr. Dover, could you fill us in on that, please?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and residents. This is similar to the agreements that we already have with the City of Balcony Heights, Leon Valley, Chavino Park, Alamo Heights, Terrell Hills, and Almaz Park. In the event that we have a large fire or a large incident, in which we require additional manpower, additional assistance, we can call on our neighboring cities and what's commonly referred to as mutual aid in the fire service. They in turn send us a truck, manpower, resources that we don't normally have available in our city, and they come and assist us, and in return, we provide that same service to the neighboring cities. We rely very heavily on this when we're responding to house fires, the Wedgewood Fire, different things like that. So this is actually giving us another resource, another city that's, that's ready to come in, that's actually within five miles of our city now. It'll help with ISO ratings for next year. It's my plan, the coming year, to move forward and try to reduce our ISO rating, which in turn can help residents with insurance costs and different things for their homeowner's insurance. So it's basically a, same, same type deal. We will provide typically the ladder truck with manpower to the city of, or the town of Hollywood Park, they in turn would do the same for us. They'll send us their ladder truck and manpower. In the event that we are shorthanded, short-staffed, we just, we don't respond, we stay inside our city. And then if we have the available resources, we would provide it to them likewise, they do the same for us. This has already been voted on and approved by the Town of Hollywood Park, by their council last week, and like I said, it's the same, similar agreement that we already have with Balcony Heights, Leon Valley, Chavino Park, and some of our other neighboring cities.
Dover, hang on just a second. Was there anyone that had any comments, or they want to ask Mr. Dover? Okay. Mr. Trevino.
Quick question, how big is their ladder? Will it reach the Wedgewood?
No, sir, it's a 75-foot quint, what we call a quint, which means it serves multiple purposes. It's, it's the same size as our ladder truck now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, I wanted to, Mr. Dover, I wanted to throw some accolades at you, because actually Mr. Dover did something that I didn't even ask him to do. Couple of months ago, when we were tasked to each department to find out how they were going to help contribute money, you know, the impound lock came up and several other items. Well, Mr. Dover went out on his own, and he, and he visited, and the way that he can participate at this time is to help lower our insurance rates. How long you been on the job now?
Since my, sir.
What took so long? Thank you, Mr. Dover, I appreciate all the work you do, and I know we'll be hearing some, hearing some things from you, and I appreciate you jumping right on it and tasking yourself to get that done. Do you have a motion to move this forward?
I so move.
Ms. McLean, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Trevino? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous, sir.
Thank you, council.
Okay, moving on, we are going to item number 3, which is confirm mayoral appointment of the members to the ad hoc comprehensive master plan committee, and talk about the meeting's schedule. Douglas, are you prepared for that tonight, since I didn't talk to you about it?
I would prefer it be on a regular schedule, city council meeting in October.
So what you're saying is you'd like to table it?
Yes, sir, please table this motion until that time.
Ms. McLean?
I have one comment on the, when the meeting, when the committee met last weekend, the October meeting was for October 28th, so that was the only substantive change that I saw that was wrong on this, or whatever that's worth.
We'll bring it up. Mr. Gregory has asked for this to be tabled until the next meeting, do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you, council. Let's move on to item number 4, which is consider and accept by minute entry the recommendations by the Street and Drainage Committee to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with RPS Clots Associates not to exceed 163,780 for the revised project design of Phase 3 of the street program, Antler and Honeysuckle. I'll tell you what, Douglas, hang on just a second, let me get a motion in a second on the table, please. Do I have a motion to move this forward into discussion?
So move.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, it was Trevino and Scott. All right, here we go. Douglas?
Kurt, do you have a map of this project?
It should be in your council packet, councilman. So it's in the slides that are in your council packet, if you want to look at that. And we've also got Louis Quayor from RPS Clots, plus a couple of his associates to speak on this, if you would like them to.
Does everybody have this map in their packet?
They should. It's part of your council packet, it's, it's broken.
Chairman of the thing, I don't, so.
It's, okay.
To, just to tell the council what this is, this is not a penny going to go to the street at this time, this is for the, enter into the agreement for the fee and the various aspects of this, for this street, which will eventually total, total cost three quarters of, approximately three quarters of a million dollars. We've cut the project in half in terms of length, and, because it would be astronomical to figure and impossible to do in one bite, although we may go out for bids for subdividing the remaining half, just to see what that would cost. Right now, this is simply to pave the 163,780 Right now, this is simply to pay the one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for, to enter into a contract with Mr. Clots on the project design side of this project. Mr. Clots, it's up to you to justify it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. So yeah, this project we've, we've been discussing for quite some, I guess, maybe about three, four, or five months. The, the, the project sort of initiated from the San Antonio Water System. They're moving forward with replacing the water and sewer infrastructure within these project limits. So at that time, our firm was engaged by Mr. Vandewali to, to look at potential street improvements within the, within this corridor. And that's what we've done. We've put a comprehensive scope together to, to evaluate the existing roadway as it is today and come up with a recommended reconstruction design to, to improve the, the current roadway. So it's not going to be, I think it's going to be different than maybe some of the recent projects you've done in terms of mill and overlay or, or slurry seal or those type of sealing projects. This is going to be a lot, a lot more comprehensive in terms of replacing the base material and pavement and, and some curbs. And there's, I think, also a small section sidewalk that if it's not currently ADA compliant, we're going to replace that as well. So, so this will be a significant improvement to this corridor.
It's already been brought before the council on the project of how much the project itself would cost. We did not address the fee. So the total project cost is how much, Mr. Vandewali?
So the total project cost that includes all, all design fees, construction fees, project management fees, provided we have a project manager on staff at the time, which we should by that time, would be about one point two nine million is what, what the total would be. However, as Councilman Gregory has pointed out, there's one section that we've identified that we would include as a primary bid. You'll see that in your, in your folder. It goes basically from Buckaroo on Antler, from Buckaroo down to between Atwater and Watlin. There's a curve in the road right there. And it also includes the piece of honeysuckle that wasn't done with the last project by Clark, where that project stopped down to Antler and replacing all the Saws infrastructure. It's important to note that we went to Saws. We, the Streets and Drainage Committee identified this as the number one project for the city that needed to be repaired based on the state of the road and the amount of traffic. That road gets approximately eighteen hundred cars a day, believe it or not, down it. We put the speed wagon out there and we measured the, measured the cars going each direction for a few days. This was during school, but it's about eighteen hundred. And so, so this was identified. We went to Saws, asked them if they would be interested in joining us in this endeavor. That section of the infrastructure for Saws is particularly bad. And they have a consent decree in order to reduce their sanitary sewer flows to zero by 2023. And this is one of their problem areas. So they agreed to it, and they have pressed forward with their design. RPS Clots is doing that design work now. And so this is the, we brought this to council previously and it kind of got turned around. But this is an opportunity to join that. The, the alternative is Saws will press forward with their project and Antler will be worse than it is now. It'll have a big trench down the middle of it that'll be different than the rest of the roadway. So I think it's, it's important, it's prudent to do as much of this as you possibly can in conjunction with Saws so that we provide the best street possible for our residents and all the folks that travel up and down that roadway. I will note, there's two different dollar figures in your package. The one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, I believe Ms. Gonzalez got that from Councilman Gregory. That was the last proposal we got from RPS Clots. We had asked them if we added a section of Atwater on, what that design fee would be. But the current proposal we have in your package is, is for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand and thirteen dollars. And that's the one that, that would not touch Atwater. That would basically just take care of Antler from Buckaroo down to, little past Atwater and that tail end to Honeysuckle. And the design then, actually the design would cover everything down to Jackson Keller. So the RPS Clots proposal would be from Buckaroo all the way to Jackson Keller, Honeysuckle down to Antler would be included in the RPS Clots proposal for one hundred and fifty-nine thousand and thirteen dollars.
May I ask a question? Hang on just a second. Douglas, are you through?
I found the map. Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Uh, hang on, Mr. Quayar.
We have name tags in this.
What happens when you get sixty-three?
Isn't that what that is?
Mr. Paul, you had some questions for Mr. Quayar.
We need to put our names on the backside, too. Yeah, I have a couple. I'm going from memory, it seems to me like May 9th, we approved five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for Antler. And we, so we passed that based upon the Streets and Drainage recommendations. And I think that's because, at the time, Douglas might be able to help me, that it was supposed to be for Buckaroo to, you know, down around by Honeysuckle, fix Honeysuckle, which has been lagging since Saws wasn't there yet. And then that would be the reconstruction. And then we were holding off to the other to see what kind of funds and everything. Now, that being said, if that's the route we're going, why are you asking for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for design? I wouldn't design the whole thing until we're ready because you know, I'm just having a problem spending, everybody needs help. Don't misunderstand me. But if you went under the first proposal of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to fix reconstruction and a major part of it, which I think is a great idea, then your fee should be substantially less for what you do for that part. Secondly, we spent probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the past three years with your firm to do drainage. You already have that drainage taken care of as far as what needs to be done. And then the third question I have, and I guess this is for Douglas, for Mr. Vandewali, for whomever, at the last meeting, we decided, or council decided, or somebody decided that we needed a project manager, whether it's in-house or outside. And so my question to you is, how much would you take out of this and how much do you have in it for a project management? So I'm getting mixed signals through this whole process, and I apologize for that.
No, no worries at all. Well, let me address the first item. You had about the five hundred and eighty-nine thousand for Antler Drive. I'm not sure where that initial number came from. If that was only to, to reconstruct a smaller section of Antler Drive, then that's, that's possible.
Down to, excuse me, down to
To Honeysuckle?
Honeysuckle, and, right, because that's where Saws is working on some drainage in there, too. And that's why we left Honeysuckle off at that end. Am I correct?
I don't recall that, but, but, but in terms of, and let me just, on the five eighty-nine thousand, I think the construction cost for just the section from Buckaroo to a little bit past Honeysuckle is about that amount, about, well, I think. Kurt, do you have those numbers? I think we had along Antler from Buckaroo to a little past Honeysuckle. We had maybe like four hundred thousand or four, four fifty for that. And then I think we had a section, that section of Honeysuckle right around a hundred. So, and those numbers are a little, but I think that's probably what, what, where we saw that five eighty-nine. And I think that was the, the construction cost. So with that.
Well, yeah, I agree.
The five eighty-nine was an earlier number. It wasn't the same section of road. It wasn't informed by a consultant at the time. It was based on previous data that we had on roadwork here in the city. And as Luis has mentioned, we haven't really taken on a full-depth repair with full curb replacements, with sidewalk involvement and everything else in quite some time here in the city. So our numbers were off, and we extended the project a little bit. We, we went from Flintstone, went and included the piece down to Jackson Keller. And it just, it was just a bad estimate, Councilman. So that was, that, but that's old news. We talked about that two or three meetings ago and
No, it's not old news, and here's why it's not old news. We passed it, so it's on the books, period. Now, if we need to change or want to change that, that has to be taken off the books, so it's not old news. That's number one. Number two, if that takes care of the reconstruction on the major issue of that street, which I do want to help, then that leaves, in my opinion, funds to, to help take care of other streets, the kind of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, the ones that are in the forty to fifty grade as far. And because if we keep letting these other streets go, we have some streets that are as bad as, as, that are not as bad as Antler, not as bad as many of the streets. So we need to do something with those streets, or they're going to be as bad as the other streets. And I think you even presented this as, as the probability also. So again, I, I don't have a problem with what we agreed to in May. And if we're going to agree to something else or bring something else forward in May, then I don't know how we're going to handle that as far as logistics or legally. Mr. Brennan might be able to help me. Do we just disregard what we approved? But it was approved. And so that was number one. And like I said, number two, if it's five hundred and eighty, five hundred and, what, forty, eighty-nine thousand dollars, then obviously the engineering fee should be much less. And then I'm back to, do you have project fee, project management fee built into this, eh?
Yeah, well, let me, let me continue to address those things. So, well, I'll come back to the, to the, to the five eighty-nine here in a minute. But in terms of our drainage consult, stuff that we've done before, Councilman, you're absolutely right. We did the citywide master drainage plan. What we're doing here for this specific is, is, is a little bit different. It's, it's design. And, and I'll, and I'll tell you, when I put this proposal together, I don't think we included, I mean, it was minimal amount of maybe in the two to five thousand dollar range to do the design for that small section there in Antler because the drainage improvements are really going to be minimal. Really, the fee is in the, in the roadway, roadway design. So, so hopefully that addresses your, your question on our previous drainage fees. The third thing on the, on the project manager, we, we don't have that in our current scope or fee. We have some construction phase services. But what Mr. Vandewali is referring to in project management is more of the full-time sort of side observation that is typically additional to what the construction phase services that we have on this proposal. So those are, those are separate than what we have currently.
You're saying that the one hundred and seventy-some odd thousand dollars doesn't have within it one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, doesn't have a project manager's fee, assuming we don't have one in it?
Well, I think when, when
Because I was on the assumption it did. You're saying it does not?
Well, when, I think when Kurt refers to a project manager, he's referring to side observation, full-time, you know, having a project manager during construction. So that's something we don't have. But we do have obviously some, some time for our project management during the design and then some during construction. But Kurt, if you want to address the question about the project.
Women.
Yes, sir.
As Mr. Paul brings up a very good point, and I was under one impression, and he brings up a very good point. You're saying that the one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars does not include within it a project manager's fee, your project manager's fee, or a project manager's?
It, it does. But like I said, I think, and I just wanted to make sure, it, our fee does have a project manager for design. But I think I'm, and I apologize, I think what Kurt was referring to when he talked about project management, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, is doing more construction phase.
So this is, yeah, this, this would be a construction phase project manager. And I know Councilman Paul, you and I have had this conversation before that it's, it's really a better practice to have somebody that's not part of the design team do the actual construction project management so that when you come up with those issues, you have a third party to determine whether it's a design error or omission or whether it's a construction practice, you know, problem. So that's what we're talking about. They would have somebody that's a project manager for the design phase as well as they do something that's called contract administration. So, you know, which is a much smaller piece than a typical project manager in the construction phase. So that's the position that was pushed forward through the budget process that we would hire somebody that could do the project management for us, that knows a little bit about road construction in addition to back benching Rick Carrata over at the Public Works Department when he wasn't out there physically managing the construction or meeting on projects or whatnot. So, so it's, it's two different bodies. Typically, the way the process works is, design's going to cost you ten to fifteen percent roughly of the construction cost. And then project management is going to cost you ten to fifteen percent of the construction cost as well. That's the true cost of construction. So what I factored in and what you see in the package is, for the total cost of the project, is the design, the construction. And then I put thirty thousand dollars in for inspection and testing for inspection. So this is something a project manager typically wouldn't do. They would call a specialist in, whether to do geotechnical inspections, whether to do density tests, whether to pour concrete cylinders so they could break them later to make sure the concrete was at the right strength. And thirty thousand's probably high. I just use that as a factor in there on top of what we would already have with our project manager watching the construction.
Well, I would, I would still like to suggest that, that we stick to the five eighty-nine plus because that's a portion that needs the full reconstruction. The rest of it is mill and overlay.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me finish.
Sure.
See, I'm, I'm seeing a list of streets here that have been suggested in the past. And I don't know if Councilman Gregory has this or not. But for example, we could do things like Squire's Road, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We could do, let's see, here we go. We could do three or four of these different streets, so they're in the mid, not to a hundred thousand dollars. I'm just trying to spread it around. I just don't, I mean, Antler needs reconstruction in a certain area, and it's going to be in the area that they're putting the water lines. Don't have a problem with that. So I guess I just don't understand what we're doing here.
Yes, sir. Well, if I can may respond to that specifically. My understanding from the condition index, the pavement condition index numbers, that entire section of Antler Drive within the limits of the Saws water and sewer replacement, were all extremely poor and met the condition for, for reconstruction. At least that's the figures that I saw. And based on my site, initial site review, it certainly does, does warrant that. Now, having said that, we are, we do have a geotechnical engineer within our, within these fees that we're going to subcontract with. And they'll be taking bores and cores of the existing sample, a sample of the existing soil conditions, run some tests, and they're going to provide some alternative recommendations to improve the road. They make this, you know, determine that some sections of the road are maybe in a little bit better condition than the, this worst area that, that you've indicated. So we may see some cost savings. But what the basis of our initial cost estimate that we discussed with Kurt was to do basically a full reconstruction for the, for those entire project limits. So once we get into the design phase and do that, geotechnical coring and investigation, we'll be, and run some tests with that, we'll be able to come up with a better, better cost estimate, frankly. And we'd be, I'd love to come back and present what our preliminary findings are in the cost estimate at that point.
How are you basing your fees in? You're basing on the cost of the project. So if the project is less than what you're anticipating there, will your design fees be less?
Well, we're still designing everything that's on this scope. When we talk about doing roadway planning profiles, doing typical sections, basically mapping out the whole project, doing traffic control, doing, everything is still going to, is still going to apply.
The question is no, or the answer is no?
Yes, correct. Yes, sir.
Well, I've got some other questions, but I got to let it go and let some other people ask questions. I'm sorry to monopolize it, but just
No, no worries.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. We're being asked to approve one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for a design of Antler, and that's going to go from Jackson Keller to Buckaroo and Honeysuckle from Castle Hills to Antler. And all we're approving today is this amount of money for you to go and do the design work and let us know exactly what it's going to take to repair those sections of road.
Yes, ma'am. That's almost entirely, yes, we're going to, this is to approve our professional fees. That is to do the design, and that's also takes us all, all the way through construction. So we wouldn't come back, let's not come back in two months and tell you, hey, this road is going to cost eight hundred thousand or one point five million, and you guys move forward. We're not going to come back and say, oh, now you need to pay us to do X, Y, and Z services.
So, so as part of your design services, you let us know how much it's actually going to cost to complete that design that you have created.
The, the cost, the construction cost.
The construction cost.
Yeah, but, but our, our fees and everything, and this is all inclusive, all the way through into construction.
A hundred and sixty-three, seven eighty is all inclusive on, this is our design, and this is how much it's gonna cost for construction.
And then we're gonna help you through the bid phase, and then we're.
And then you work us all the way through the process.
All the way till the construction ends.
Councilman Scott, that's actually one fifty-nine thirteen. That's what I was saying, is that one sixty-three also included part of Atwater, as we had a separate meeting with Councilman Gregory, Councilman Paul on this topic, and we had talked about possibly adding that piece. But that's off the table. We've just left it on.
So, so my packet's incorrect? That's not the revised proposal?
No, it's, if you'll go into the actual RPS clots bid, I think you'll see, on page six, it should follow the slideshow. There, on page six, it shows a breakdown for engineering fees, geotechnical bidding phase, and construction phase, and the total is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand thirteen.
Page, page six of the slide presentation?
No, page six, after the slide presentation.
Of the contact?
There should be the.
Inside the packet.
Yeah, the proposal from RPS clots, yes.
This, this is, as I say, a lot of information that, I have more questions. What would the cost be if you just did it down to the proposed project we have at hand, and not all the way to Jackson Keller? What would your project fees, since that is approximately half the project, would your fees be approximately half the cost?
Yeah, more than likely. Maybe, yeah, about, about half the, half the fees. So, we would still have.
Can you get that figure to the council if you're, if we're asked to bring it back in October at the regular council meeting on the second Tuesday in October?
So, this is.
Because I'm not really quite sure the council wants to pay you for a survey that takes you to Jackson Keller, or half, half, a lot of this project, we don't know whether we're even gonna do. So, we may wanna be able to look at what we want to do for certain versus what we wanna do perhaps. So, would you think by the second Tuesday in October, you could come back to council and let us know what the fees would be for just this section that we're authorizing?
So, yes, I can, but if I may, we are done with the preliminary, the surveying has been, the field survey has been completed by SAWs. SAWs completed the survey for these entire project limits. We're getting the mapping here, I think. Marcus here in a couple of days, I think, is when we're expecting.
So, we don't pay for that? They've already done it?
They've done the survey, and that's not, that's not in here. So, you're really getting, I think, a good bang for your buck, combining everything with SAWs, these project limits.
If we got the buck.
Uh, correct.
Mr. Van de Wally, is that section, the, the added alternate, that Antler from Atwater to Jackson Keller, is that the section that you mentioned if we did not go ahead and add it, SAWs is still gonna do it and trench it up?
That, I believe, is their intent, is they will continue on with their project and take it to Jackson Keller. I, I'd just like to comment on, on the question about cutting it in half. It's not quite half, it's a little, it's probably two-thirds of the project or so is in that Antler and Honeysuckle piece down to Atwater. So, I don't know that it would be half. Second of all, I wanted to highlight, on your slides, you can see the OCIs for those sections, and anything below fifty, it's not, it's advisable to look at for a full-depth repair. These sections of the road, just looking at them, are gonna require a full-depth repair. So, the nice thing about it is if you set it, break it up into separate bid packages, as we discussed earlier, Councilman, which would include not only what you've got shown here, but maybe having another line at Flintstone Court. So, that's two, two separate, so two separate add alternates to the bid. Then you can go as far as your funds will allow you to go with the actual construction. Plus, the other nice thing is, is if there is a windfall of funds, if there's, you know, you've got a project on the shelf that's ready to execute and put back on the street for bids, and, you know, immediately. If they're doing the project, and you determine, you find, you know, you've got more funds available to put against the project, you can go back to the contractor and say, is your bid still good for this section of the road? You know, even though they're in the process of doing that other section of the road, it gives you a lot of options for us, for not a, it's not an insignificant investment, but it's, you know, based on what you can get out of that potentially, and the leverage you can use on that investment in order to get more of the roadway done, it all really needs to be replaced, just based on the OCIs ranging from twenty-four to twenty-six, oh, no, thirty-three, I guess, on that section of the road. And then on the other section, you can see it's in the twenties. So, you know, I, I would just encourage you, because I don't think you're gonna get the return, which, as you're thinking, Councilman, to say, cut it in half. First of all, it's not quite half. Second of all, there's an economy of scale thing that says, once they're in the process of doing the design, building the plans, and so on and so forth, it's a lot easier to crank out a few more sheets. When you go back to redesign this, it won't cost, it'll cost you a little bit more money than it would.
So, if they designed the whole thing, we always have that design, but we don't have to actually act on that whole design?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay. Since there's no citizens to be heard on this item, we're gonna call for the vote. Call, call for the vote has been made. So, I'm assuming you're making a, excuse?
I, even I have more questions.
The vote for the call, vote for the vote has been called, Mr. Brennan? Does that go by a majority vote of council up here?
Yeah, is there a second for that motion?
Is there a second to that motion, for a call for the vote?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got, we got a motion as second. We're calling for the vote on item three, I believe, no, not three. We're calling for item of the vote on item number four. All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, I was in the abstain, I didn't get to ask any questions.
The, the question was, this, this deliberation keeps, apparently keeps, keeps ongoing, so Ms. McGlynn has called for the vote, and we've actually got it on the table, whether or not we're gonna call for the vote and move forward, or we're gonna continue questioning Mr. Quayle.
I'd like to continue, I'd like to ask some questions. I was waiting for it to get down this way.
So, what you're saying now is two to three, sorry, fails.
Well, I can withdraw my second if he has a quick question that he would like to ask. I don't want him not to be able to vote on it.
That's kinda withdrawing, being pregnant, but that's okay. It's already said.
Please, I don't wanna leave Mr. Trevino out if he has a question, and I think he.
My motion, it failed, so they get to pass.
Yeah, once, once it's done, it's failed, so let's go. Where were we? Frank, Douglas?
I'm gonna talk about the contract.
Okay.
Instead of, see, I figure, I, I feel like some of these questions, and we've been on the committees before, so you know, I'm kinda, I feel like some of these questions should have been answered better. And, and I have to ask Mr. Brennan, just as a side note, Mr. Brennan, we approved five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars on May ninth. If we approve something different to that, do we have to get rid of the other? How does that work specifically?
Well, it, it would be best, at the time you're approving the new project, to cancel the prior project that was approved.
That's what I figured. And I don't see that in here, that's why I was asking the question. Now, I, I did have a couple of things, like on page five, okay, of your contract. The, the second sentence, it says, the engineer will conduct construction progress reports on a bi-monthly basis? That seems to be not very much. Is that, is that an error?
It is. Yeah, and then if you, if you, that should have been, said bi-weekly. If you go further down, it's two per month. So, yeah, that was, that was my mistake.
So, you mean bi-weekly?
Correct, yes, sir.
It doesn't say that there, so you.
Correct, yes, sir. I apologize.
And then, number task eighteen, where it says, me, it's a, talking about meeting beyond this will be considered as an additional service, talking about changes. It seems to me like any change that we should be responsible for, if it's a change order that we put in to extend the project, not because of weather or some of the other circumstances. Does that need clarification in the contract, or what is your understanding? Is my question clear? Am I making myself, because if I'm not, I apologize.
No, you are. So, what we do, what I, what I always do when I put these, I have a pretty good idea of how long the construction's gonna take, and so I base our time and our, and our services on, on that construction duration. So, what I'm, what I mean by this, by adding this statement, is if the, for, for example, if we have a contractor that's just not here, or something changes and, and this construction duration goes, you know.
But that's beyond our control, and, and you're asking that we would pay for that. My point is, is that I would like to have a set fee, and those circumstances, the only time we should have to add to that fee is if we cause a problem, if we extend the, the extent of it. Now, maybe that's asking too much, I'm not an engineer.
No, sir, it's not. And it isn't, it doesn't say here that, that this will be an additional services that will be billed to the city. If you notice, it just says an additional service. So, what tip, and I, thank goodness, I've been doing this twenty-one, twenty-two years.
Longer than me.
And that's only happened to me once, where the contractor went just way beyond, and what the, the, that particular client that I had went after the contractor to get what's called liquidated damages, and that's how our additional services.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're, you're responsible for getting the contractor and following through, if in fact, you're doing the project and watching over the project, correct?
Well, the, you mean the, the construction contractor?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we hire ex-ABC contractor, and he's not on the job side like he's supposed to be, and he's doing other stuff, and it should have been an eight-month contract.
That's not our fault.
And, correct, and it's not my fault either.
No, but you're in charge of them, or you oversee them, or you're the project manager?
No, I'm not. I am the project manager.
So, who are you gonna charge for that? Us?
You charge a contractor. So, the, so there's, there'll be stipulations.
It doesn't say that, that's why I'm asking the question.
Correct, but there's stipulations, when we put the contract documents together, there's a, there's a, what's we call a liquidated damages clause. So, if the contractor goes beyond the allotted con, contract duration, then there's allowance for us to go after the contractor.
Go to page six, if you will, please, Mr.
Yes, sir.
Under proposed for the city of Castle Hills to do, you have materials, testing, and inspection services. We don't do that. Why would that be our responsibility?
Councilman, that's that thirty thousand dollars that I mentioned earlier, that we would have to pay.
Well, who would we have do it? We mean, we'd go out and look for somebody to do this?
There, you know, there are multiple laboratories here in the city of San Antonio you contact to do this work for you.
So, that's not part of the design process to do the whole?
No, we'd have Roba Kistner, Arius, or one of these. It's not part of, no, it's, it's excluded from this. They're not doing the, they're not doing the project management piece. Whoever's doing the project management typically arranges for those services.
Well, I'll let this go. I just think that we need to revisit this whole thing with a proper contract, with something that also states that we remove the five eighty-nine, if that's what we agree on, and like Mr. Brennan said, and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Ms. McGlynn, do you have any comments on this, or for Mr. Quayle?
Um, I, yes, I do. In talking about task sixteen on page five, that's the construction phase, project management. As a city, we have authorized hiring a project manager, and I'm wondering if this is something that we could negotiate with you, that if we have that person on staff, that we might be able to reduce those services, or take those services out of the contract, or if this is?
Absolutely, yeah. If you, if you have a, a full-time person that'll do the, have progress meetings, and we don't have to attend, I, I still like to stay in contact and, and, and involved during construction, just in case, because the person that you're gonna bring on, on board is not gonna be intimately familiar with the design. So, we still have these services to be involved during construction, at least a couple of times a month. Go look at me with the contractor, see what's going on, to address any, any sort of maybe design questions and design issues that your project manager for the city is not necessarily gonna be able to handle. So, but if, if this project manager that you bring in is, you know, super strong and can handle some of these things, then yeah, absolutely, we can, we can, you know, maybe just do monthly meetings instead of bi-weekly, or some, something of that nature, so yeah, we can.
I, I would advise against it, Councilman, simply because you wanna keep the designer of record engaged in the process. This isn't, this isn't the daily oversight, this is the coming into your scheduled meetings so that you can consult with them, so whoever your project manager is can, can address items and issues with them and the contractor in the same room.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, and I can understand that you would want to stay into it, in the process, and I, and I certainly wouldn't wanna catch you completely out and say bye, you know, never mind, you don't get to be there. But it is something, just as a city, in looking at the different aspects of costs, if it, if there are some parts of that particular task that are something that our in-house person would be handling, or maybe not completely, but just partially, if that's just something we can look at.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you.
Miss, yes. Three things. This project is different than the project that was approved by council in May. The committee members, I do not believe they've realized this. Second, the dollar amount should be different. And third, what the committee agreed on was to only half the project, the, basically, the baby cut in half. And inasmuch as there are more questions than answers at this moment, I would propose that we table this item until the second Tuesday in October, when we can view it more, the committee can view it more. I think, I think there are two, there are a lot of questions here, and I'm gonna call a re-meeting of the Street and Drain Committee, and we're gonna go over this further.
Don't we already have a motion and a second on the table right now on this item? Okay, so what you're asking to do is table the item?
You don't table, you postpone. There's no such thing as tabling.
Postpone and table it until the second Tuesday in October, when we have further answers.
Can Mr. Trevino ask his questions?
Hang on just a second, okay?
Can that be done?
Sure. He can, he can, I mean, after there's a motion and a second on the table, we're in discussion, he can decide to postpone with a motion and a majority vote, is that correct, Mr. Brennan? Okay, thank you. In the meantime, Mr. Trevino, thank you for being patient. Go ahead.
In the, in the interest of time, ma'am, I just have one pertinent question. Would us delaying that affect any kind of savings with SAWs?
Yes, because we're, we, and, and I, and I'm sorry, I was gonna mention that earlier, that we're on the, we're on the clock, so to speak, with SAWs. We are getting our surveying, mapping here in a couple of days, and we have a due date to submit plans and final plans, and go to advertisement with SAWs, simply because of what Kurt mentioned earlier, that they're trying to get this constructed to, to, to get what they call credit for their SSO consent decree. So, if, I think if we miss this timeline and, and not, not join the SAWs plans, or we're, it's gonna, it's gonna cost us more later. So, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not sure how council would like to proceed, but I would definitely like to get some of SAWs' money to fix our streets.
I, I think it's imperative that we do that, and what I wanna know is if we go to October the second, if council decides to move this to October the second, what kind of peril does that put you in?
October third.
Third, second, third.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be difficult for us to, I mean, we can, we can, we can work a little, a little overtime, and maybe some weekend work to try to catch up, but the sooner we can get started, really the better.
I would hope that town, council would take into consideration these, that, and if we have to call an executive meeting or a, or a special meeting, we do so, and not put them in a bind. You know, there, there are, I see there are some things to work out in this contract, but in the same, in the same breath, you know, this is like Top Gun, he's already gets shot down before he even gets off the runway. So, I would suggest that if we do postpone it, that we postpone it in a time that would, would help them work with SAWs in order for us to save the money. That make sense?
This matter was already postponed once. We talked about it on August eighth, and so here we are, September twenty-sixth, and I'm not inclined to do something that's going to cost us more money if we lose out from, had some savings from SAWs.
No, and if there was more to work out, Mr. Gregory, why was it put on the agenda today if it wasn't ready to present?
What was ready to present? Was not exactly what the committee thought was being presented. The five hundred, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, zero thirteen is for the entire project down at Jackson Keller, but that's not what the committee wanted to do. The committee wanted to do half the project and have the report down to what you have in your packet. The other half was to go out for bids, to see if anybody would bite, and to see what it would cost. We're asking to be, we're asking. Was not exactly what the committee thought was being presented. The five-hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-zero-thirteen is for the entire project down at Jackson Keller, but that's not what the committee wanted to do. The committee wanted to do half the project and have the report down to what you have in your packet. The other half was to go out for bids, to see if anybody would bite, and to see what it would cost. We're asking to be, we're asking in this hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars, the whole thing. That is not what the committee suggested. And I would simply, that, that is the one big difference.
This is the second time.
My mistake, you can blame me.
Well, that's fine. I mean, we can fingerpoint all day, but the point is, can you get your committee to back together?
You bet I can.
Okay, let's do that. How about that?
What's the latest date that you have to get something certain?
Well, I think, um, if, if you don't mind, our plans to SAWs were, we have...
Sixteenth of October?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're designing already, so we wanted to make sure to meet SAWs' schedule.
If it's the sixteenth of October, when's the, when's the council meeting in October?
Twelve.
So there's, so there's plenty of time.
They cannot design something in four days.
No, no, no. There's plenty of time for the committee to meet again.
Oh.
To see whether or not we agree that the projects, recognize the projects are different, which we...
Well, why don't you go ahead, if you don't mind, go ahead and call that committee together. Let's, let's get them back in here. Am I on that committee?
I'd like to call a vote.
Mr. Brennan, where are we?
Uh, I was just checking. When she's calling for a vote, that's really, she moves the previous question, which means vote on the motion, vote on the subject that's on the table.
Okay.
Okay, we've had a, we've had a member call for the vote again.
And a pass with a two-thirds majority.
Okay, so right now, what we did was we have a motion and we have a second on the table. We now have somebody who called for the vote, one of the members. So with that said, we're going to call for the vote. Roll call. Mr. Trevino. No. Ms. Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Paul. Mr. Douglas?
No.
Okay. Item fails. Thank you. In the meantime, I suggest that we, that you get your committee back together, and that we get this done, and then, and then we get in contact with Mr. Cuellar, okay, and set up, if we have to, a special meeting in order to get this pushed through before we lose some money. If we lose some, never mind. Anyway, it's not good to lose money.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way for more than two council members to be involved in this street committee meeting that would possibly alleviate some of the back and forth here?
Yeah, we, we've done it before. We've posted the Street and Drainage Committee meeting so that there's a possible quorum, but I don't think, can the council members actually discuss the item as an action item there?
Yeah, if there's more than two members there, there's a quorum, and there has to be an agenda, but there's, it's just a meeting. Got to have, take minutes and all that.
There's agenda. We bring in a secretary in order to do the notes and all that kind of stuff, so yes.
You can limit the agenda discussion, or you put it on as an action item, because it's really, in essence, a city council meeting.
At which point it's a special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting.
I just think it'd be a little bit easier for us to solve what we need to solve there as opposed to bringing it to a regular council meeting.
So I would recommend, if y'all want to do that, that we do it next week, because it's, it really, to give RPS Clots enough time to do the design work, if y'all decide to commission them to do this design, then that need, that needs to take place soon if they've got, uh, plans that are due to SAWs by October sixteenth. That doesn't happen overnight.
I agree with Mr. Trevino. Please do that, so we can come and get this dealt with.
Okay. Douglas, nobody's blaming you. I'm on that committee, too.
Oh, I'll take the responsibility for all of it. Does it require that we have a notice up to X number of days, how, how many?
Seventy-two hours.
That's right, seventy-two hours.
And that way, we can, we can, good. All right. If you get your committee together, I'd appreciate it. Where are we? Okay, let's move on to item number five. We actually have somebody signed up. Item number five is considering approved by minute entry, authorizes the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Bear County for construction, goods, and services on the contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to perform a modified slurry seal on West Avenue in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-fifty dollars. Mr. Vandewooldy?
Yes, this was brought to the council in August at our second, first, second meeting of the month, uh, the first time we had had a second meeting of the month, and Councilman Paul, at that point, requested it be tabled until this meeting, so that it could be discussed, because the next week, Tony Vasquez from Bear County was going to go on a ride around with Councilman Gregory, Councilman Paul, and some others. So, since that time, we did find out that Bear County was awarded, are awarded the contract to Intermountain Slurry Seal, and we already have an interlocal agreement, which you also have in your council packets, with Bear County. Therefore, we can exercise that. I believe there's a hundred-dollar fee on that in order to do it. The dollar figure is a little bit lower than what we saw before, but that is because it does not include pavement markings, because that was not in the Bear County, um, contract, however it was in the city of San Antonio contract. Still gives us the economy of scales. We're just going to have to figure out how to go out and do the pavement marking under a different contract. So, this bid is still good. I talked to Kevin Harris last week. I talked to Tony Vasquez. They are, um, willing to allow us to use their contracting mechanism through the interlocal agreement to, to put the seal coat modified. It's a modified slurry seal, which means we don't have to make any ADA adjustments or anything like that. If we would have called it a microslurry, and it really is, it's all in the taxonomy, then we would have had to make them. So he modified his proposal to us, made it a modified slurry seal. I, I would direct council's attention also to the same slideshow that had the, um, proposal for RPS Clots design, and the last two sheets in there talk a little bit about the, um, uh, West Avenue Seal Coat project. We heard from Kevin Harris previously that they could hear from us probably as early as, or as late, or start the work as late as November. But if we're going to go down this road, we also, like I said, need to line up pavement marking at the same time. I want to remind everybody, this is, this is to give the pavement another five to eight years. The ultimate plan for West Avenue that we've discussed before would include putting in a, uh, application with the Alamo Area Metropolitan Planning Office in order to do a, um, a combined effort, where we got matching funds from the Texas Department of Transportation for eighty percent of the construction costs on West Avenue to do a major reconstruction project on West Avenue. So, so that's kind of the long-term goal. This is the short-term goal, just to give another five to eight years of a, of a good treatment on it that will provide an additional wearing surface to the pavement. I did, I had some concerns at the last Street and Drainage Committee that came up about cleaning the roadway enough. Uh, when I talked to Kevin Harris, he said that what they do is, his main concern is crack sealing and vegetation. So, Rick's guys have already got it scheduled to go out there and finish up the crack sealing. It's been crack sealed a couple of years ago. They did a great job. Kevin Harris, who used to do this work for the Texas Department of Transportation, crack sealing, all maintenance activities, uh, said the guys really looked like they knew what they were doing. They did a great job. There are some cracks that need to be, that have propagated a little bit. There's some resealing that's got to be done, and we got to go out there and kill out some vegetation, spray some Roundup on it, hoe it out, that sort of thing. But only in a couple, a couple spots. There are some sections of pavement that it would be nice to get those redone, uh, under kind of a maintenance level of effort. Go in and do some full-depth repair, particularly right over there in front of Antonian. So, the, um, uh, so I've, I've been in conversation with RPS Clots about giving us basically a pavement section designed for that sec, just for that section of roadway, to come in under a minor maintenance project to repair that roadway. Be nice to get that done before we did the, um, the modified slurry seal on top of it, but not absolutely necessary. In other words, we don't want to miss out on the opportunity to slurry seal West Avenue for two-hundred feet of pavement over by Antonian, or however long that stretch of pavement is. So, that's, that's the item that's before you. This is another time-sensitive item. I'll remind the council, you can approve it or disapprove it, but I think we run a big risk if we let West Avenue go. I believe Councilman Gregory will actually agree with me on this, that the Street and Drainage Committee has been very emphatic that this get passed, because we have got to do something with West Avenue. And that's all in there.
Do you have a motion for that item, please? So moved, do we have a second? Thank you. Okay, do we have any brief discussion?
I have a couple.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
Kurt, when I did take the ride with Tony, he did mention, like you said, how are we going to get the, the stuff in front of Antonio fixed prior, because he said that's a, he, he said that that would be the thing to get done. And, um, uh, so, I was, I was hoping to utilize that. I need to talk to Tony, utilize that same interlocal agreement to tap into one of his contracts to come out and repair that section of pavement. Either that, or we just put it out for bid and get three bids on it. Will we be able to get it done before the, uh, slurry seal is done?
Potentially, but as I said, it's not going to hurt it to slurry seal it, and it's a couple hundred feet of pavement compared to the, and down one lane versus the rest of West Avenue, which is, which really should be done.
And, uh, West Avenue south of four-ten, as we all know, that's the worst section.
This proposal includes that. I talked to Kevin Harris about that, and I said if we could, if we wanted to de-scope that, he said, yeah, we just de-scope it. It's just whatever.
But it doesn't take, it doesn't really take care of the big problems there, number one. Number two, where do we, well, that's another subject. I was going to ask where do we stand with VIA, because they need to get, come up.
That's, that's another topic of discussion, and RPS Clots happens to be doing that design, oh, they've left for VIA as well to put in those bus pads. So there's a section of that over in front of HEB, but it's, it's one lane. It's a concrete pad that they put out in front of HEB, but that doesn't take care of the whole roadway, and that's a mess over there. I mean, that really is...
There's, there's no engineering with the slurry seal, right?
No. Just other than doing these little spot repairs, you know, if we want to get a pavement section or something, but no, for the, for the slurry, there's no engineering required. What they'll do is they'll go out and they'll put tabs down on the stripes that are there, and they'll seal over the top of it, and then the next day, you come in there with a, with a striping machine, and you put the stripes on it.
Okay.
So, that's it, pretty much.
Okay.
Mr. Trevino, you had a question for the gentleman?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Vandewoold, I just wanted to point out that the area in front of Antonio that's failing has failed before, so I'd just like to make sure that whatever we do, or I don't know, to figure out what the problem is for, for sure this time.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's right in that drainage basin right there. So it's, it's problematic, so we will make sure that whatever engineering solution they come up with is the best that we can, you know, put in there without too much cost. Maybe we go in there with flowable fill or something to that effect. But even that, if you've got bad, bad subgrade underneath there because it's being washed out by flooding under West Avenue, um, I don't know what's under there. It could cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to figure that out and get that fixed. And I don't think we want to spend that much money for that repair. I don't think. I think what we want to do is, let's repair that pavement section, and let's get it to where it'll hold for the next five years, and then when we come in and text on is paying eighty percent of the construction costs as, if we get selected under that Alamo Area MPO project, that's when we really fix that, right?
Another thing just worth noting, SAWs is going to have to replace a cutoff on the, um, in the street, uh, on West Avenue, right in front of St. George. The way that the streets were designed, there's not an actual cutoff the way it should be, so the cutoff is in the middle of the street. That doesn't work. So, that is actually going to have to be replaced, and I think that we should probably work with SAWs to make sure that's done before we do the, we apply the seal.
We can definitely engage with SAWs on that.
Lastly, I had the, uh, opportunity to attend the San Antonio Mobility Coalition luncheon today, and ran into some people that spoke very highly with CEC, they spoke very highly of the work that Rick's team did, patching all the cracks on West Avenue. I also had an opportunity to talk with Jeff Basson with VIA, and he is telling me that they're still on schedule to start the project for the repairs and the, uh, the additional work, probably in January. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Is there anyone else who has any comments? Right before we do that, Ms. Winger, you were signed up for this item?
Thank you very much. Leslie Winger, one-thirty-seven Lou John. I actually addressed this when it was first brought up at a prior meeting. I, I do have a concern. The more I hear about it, we had a whole presentation from, um, the gentleman from Intermountain Slurry, and I'm not saying that it's exactly the same, and I know that Frank has gotten the county to look at it. They're, they're working with Intermountain Slurry, if I understand it, but I do want to remind you, these are the same people in the county that recommended Reclamite, and Reclamite turned out to be a total waste of our money. It didn't do anything. It was equivalent to hiring gypsy contractors. Now, if this is different, that's fine. I trust that Douglas and, and Frank will do their due diligence on it, but it sounded awful lot like it. And now we hear that it's going to last for five to eight years, same thing we were told about Reclamite, but it didn't. It didn't even last one year. So, I hate to see this amount of money being spent. It doesn't sound like a lot, but we don't have that much money. I have actually talked to about thirty-six people who live on, around West Avenue on both sides, and nobody is at all interested in having anything done on West Avenue. Everybody wants to have the residential streets done. So when we take this amount of money out of our residential street program, then we lose it to do the residential streets. And I think Mr. Paul has already addressed that on another issue. I also am concerned about why we have to do the crack sealing. That seems to be a very bad idea. Please come to my neighborhood and see what kind of crack sealing we've had done there. Very lumpy. Yes, it's true. You can drive on it. It doesn't matter. But again, a lot of people, as long as I've lived here, walk and jog, and it's very difficult when you have all these lumps from the crack sealing. So, I can question whether with us doing the crack sealing, we're actually going to have the kind of warranty that we want. So that would be, those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. That brings up a question I had, and, and it might have been answered. If I missed it, blame it on my age. Did, so, we're going to do the crack sealing and all that kind of stuff. Did they come out and, they come out and inspect it before we do, which, can, can they come back on our warranty in any way?
Mr. Vandewoold, Mr. Brennan?
I sat down with, I, one of the things I raised with Kevin was, can we go walk the project beforehand to make sure it meets your expectations for prep work, so that y'all won't come back later and say it wasn't prepped appropriately? He said, absolutely. Project manager will go out there with your guys and walk the site, make sure everything's done, that needs to be done.
Once, once that's done, though, Kurt, where, is it in the contract where their warranty will, will cover it, or it's, uh, you know, cross my heart and hope to die, or what is it?
I'll have to go back and look in the contract and see, specifically, when we asked him that question when he came out and briefed the council last time, my recollection of his answer was, if it's something that's caused by his workmanship and his crew, they'll come back and fix it. If it's something that, for instance, you get somebody that drives over it when it's still, you know, when, when, and they drive around a barricade and go through it, then they don't feel like, they feel like somebody else should pay for that, if they've got barricades up and people are driving around. And I agree, whoever drives over it should pay for it.
I would like to, uh, ask council that if they do pass this tonight, that we put in an amendment, that if we get a written agreement from them that they approve our crack seal, if indeed that's what it is, and then the warranty would cover unconditionally.
That's a good idea. Mr. Brennan, can you formulate that language for the?
Yes. The, uh, you know, the contractor, this going through Bear County is just a facilitator to, for us to get to a contractor to do it on a, kind of a group price. But our contract is with the contractor, and it needs to have the same warranty that we would normally expect from a road contractor.
I'd rather, I'd, firstly, I'd love, rather see council go ahead and pass that and go ahead and, I mean, if they do pass it, not, go ahead and pass it, if they do pass it, to make sure that there is an unconditional, one-hundred percent ironclad warranty with no, with them not able to get out of it. You know, I could see them, we could go out there and do the thing, and, oh, somebody ran over that over there. So that's not going to count, and then, then we're stuck. And, uh, you know, it's too easy to get involved in this.
How do we put that in this proposal?
Typical warranty period is a year for this type of work, so I'll just confirm that with Kevin Harris. So if I can confirm that, that it's a one-year warranty from the time of installation, would that?
I do, I think it's a good idea to have it in writing. I really do.
Why don't you make it in the amendment for the item?
So move the amendment to this item that we have in the contract?
Do we have a motion and a second on the table for this item?
Yes, I think we did.
Okay, so you're, you're adding an amendment?
Amendment to this, to approve in the contract words and languages that holds Castle Hills harmless of any defect or indiscretion that may come about unless it is caused by somebody going around the barricade, or something to that effect. Can you come up with such language, Mr. Brennan? Can you come up with such language, Mr. Brennan?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the table for that. Uh, Mr. Brennan will come up with the language, I'm sure, before we leave tonight. We all understa... Did we get the idea, though?
So, all we have, all we have in front of, all we have in front of us is the estimate. We have yet to approve the actual contract with the contractor, and you can negotiate the terms of the contract once we've seen it. We have not seen the contract for them. They may have a very appropriate warranty in their actual contract.
Well...
All we have in front of us is the estimate for the property.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the contract. So, at this point, putting something in about a warranty in a contract that we haven't even seen is a little bit of cart before the horse.
Again, if it was pushed, if it was...
Well, if it's there, it doesn't make any difference. If it isn't there, it does.
Well, that's true, so we need to review the contract and be careful. So, what we're really asking is that, that whoever signs the contract makes sure that we have a, a good warranty provision in there that protects us.
That's what I thought.
Okay, all right. So, let's vote on the amendment? All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay, we got the amendment on there. Mr. Brennan, you understood what the amendment was? Thank you very much. Okay, now on the original. All in favor? Uh, is there anybody else who wanted to speak? Yes. Okay, go ahead. Uh, Frank?
Oh, is it?
Oh, Moretta, I'm sorry. Oh, did you wanna speak on it before we did the vote? Okay, good. Mr. Trevino? You done? All right, so, everybody in favor? Unanimous again, thank you, with the language that Douglas put in there. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which two people are signed up for. Uh, the mayor actually, uh, took the, took it off the agenda, although we were going to allow citizens to speak, I believe, is what he said. So, with that said, Mr. McCormick, you're signed up to speak for this item?
Clyde McCormick, two oh seven Carrollwood. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I signed up originally for a couple of citizen items that were not on the agenda, and do I bring those up now, or should we just postpone that altogether?
Yeah, that, well, he signed up on the citizens to be heard thing. Uh, yes, sir. Go ahead. We do, yeah, we have a...
They were, they were two items. The council had brought up the issue of having a rapid reset on the, uh, retirement issue that we've heard a couple of times. You're not hearing me? I'll have to speak up. I'm sorry. Uh, so I'll start over from the beginning. Clyde McCormick, two oh seven Carrollwood, and I'm talking on the citizen to be heard on non-agenda item relative to the, the first one being the rapid reset issue that has been mentioned in council with regard to the retirement, uh, case. It occurs to me that there might be an appropriate, uh, ordinance that could, could address that by prohibiting a rapid reset on an issue that has already been voted, heard and voted on by the council in the immediately preceding meeting, given, say, two weeks to have that heard in, in a special meeting or, or other venue. That's just a thought. Second, second item is the notice. Uh, it, it occurs to me that we're still using seventeenth-century notice, uh, procedures, even though we have reduced our notice time to three days, uh, as in accordance with the fact that we have computers and telephones, and we can get other, other means of notice out. But when the city posted on, on the website, as far as I know, there's no other notice, and somebody who wants to find out if something has been set has to go each time to look and see if something has been set for, for hearing, or if there's a special meeting or other meeting of the council. So, I'm thoughtful that there might be some other way to do that besides just posting it and having, hoping people can come by the courthouse, or having it in a, in a tab attached to the computer website, something beside the town crier. There are all kinds of contact programs that are available for the computer, where a one-button push could give notice to a lot of people, either have them all sign up if they wanna be heard on that, or find some other way to get it. I, it, it needs to be something that's not gonna be burdensome to the staff to do, but I think that's worthwhile consideration for future thought. Uh, and that's all I had on those, on those items.
Thank you.
And with, with regard to the retirement issue, uh, there, there were a nu, a number of items on discussion. One was the longevity of, of the, of the other issues, issues of retirement on, uh, the calendar for the council. It's been on for five years, ten years, and whatnot. One of the concerns that I've heard addressed on a number of sites, another, number of cases, has been that, that there are houses here that still have water in them when it rains a lot. And on my street, which is the other side of this street, I've seen three feet of water there on occasion when the, uh, when there's a real heavy rain. That has to do with the drainages from the north side, but there are plenty of other issues around that have been on, the, on the docket here for ten years, twenty years, thirty years, or longer. The issue of Carrollwood Street has been on, on the docket for fifty years since the house has been built, and there've been, there've been occasional flood issues there, and in other places in town where things need to be addressed. The annuity issue that, that Mr. Douglas mentioned only comes up at the end when a, an employee retires. When the employee retires, that's when he makes a decision as to how he's gonna receive his benefit, and that's when the benefit actually is defined in concrete and becomes a matter of contract. So, uh, there are, there are some protective provisions in the TMRS retirement plan that don't apply to lots of other cities, but there are, as, as you know, one or two cities. I think San Antonio is with TMRS, and it has a huge deficit, a huge unfunded liability. I, I did write a letter that has some, some, uh, applicability here, and the fact is that I think TMRS is the best of the, I think, forty-nine pension systems that are run by state agencies. It's, it's a good system, and we already have that liability in the profile that we have at the moment, our current portfolios under TMRS, and we have it. It's a good one. My only concern is that there are plenty of issues around that need to be addressed. They all, some of them have priority. I think when you have people's lives disrupted by floodwaters or ordinary rainwater circumstances, I think that probably should have a priority, even though they're, they're only one or two or three people in the, in the city, and especially where the period of time has been, as it has been here, a long time, more than five, ten years, or whatever. We do have this additional fifty-seven thousand dollars that we're using to pay down our unfunded pension liability. However, there is still a risk that if the market tanks, we would lose a substantial portion of our, of our, uh, assets. If we do that, then that will be, that will be actuarially handled, and you'll convert that to an unfunded pension liability, and that additional unfunded pension liability will have to be paid off, just like our current one is having to be paid off. It's reduced because we only, we only recognize ten percent of the loss in any, in the first year, ten percent additional in the second year, and third year, and, and so on. But if that recovery time is longer, the longer it lasts, the longer we're gonna be here, uh, saddled with a very high contribution payment. I'd note that, that Houston right now is dealing with a, a, an additional contribution payment in, in the amount of about thirty-four percent of its payroll. That's in addition to payroll. If we were anywhere close to that, we'd be way underwater. So, what we need to do is to prioritize our spending real carefully and look at this to see when and where it's appropriate to do it. I agree that probably it is appropriate to do it. Uh, as far as the, as far as the COLA is concerned, Ms. McLenn mentioned a two-percent COLA, I believe, I could be mistaken, but the COLA we approved, if I recall correctly last, last meeting, was three percent, and there's a reason for that. And nobody has mentioned, was it just two? I'm sorry. Uh, and we, we might actually wanna take another look at that, because the three-percent COLA, if we do that on a regular basis, provides some additional benefits for employees under the TMRS agreement. I didn't know that until I had an opportunity to go through some of the documentation, but I have the auditor's report from last year for TMRS, and that three-percent COLA is, is part of some of the benefits that our, our employees would get, and we might wanna take a look at that, uh, at someplace along the way to see if it's significant and whether or not we could, need to go back and reconsider that issue. Uh, that really is all, about all I have. The only concern I had was TMRS is good, we just need to consider how to prioritize our spending and make sure that we cover the important things, the most important things first, when we have very limited money to apply to these things.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I've got a question. I'd like to, uh, invite you personally, if I'm still around here then, to get on this committee, uh, what we talked about, or what I talked about, I don't know, maybe, maybe council doesn't think it's a good idea when we come up to these, uh, important issues on, uh, get with the department heads and things like that. I'd like for you to serve on that committee.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
And I'd like to, like to say now, in case I get hit by a bus or something, that maybe you could ask whoever's in charge to make sure he's on the committee, 'cause obviously he does his homework, he's got everything he needs to, to do it, and that'd be important. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. All right. With that said, it is, uh, we're on item adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie. Doggone it, I'm sorry, I had you right here. And Sylvia was also on the list, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I don't really wanna go through everything I planned to say. I, I, I appreciate Douglas Gregory's, um, input on finance and investing as usual, but tonight, I really wanna thank Frank Paul, and I wanna thank you, the mayor, um, for your very sensible approach, and you have really restored the confidence that the people were looking for.
Thank you.
Because when you have a final vote, people expect it to be a final vote and not to come back and change it. And I wanna thank Mr. Brennan for recognizing that as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Winger. Uh, where did Sylvia go? Bernard? Let's hold it down unless you wanna get run out on a rail, but you can, uh, take your time.
Citizens to be heard, I, I didn't sign up.
You're good.
Um, uh, there's a campus improvement committee at, uh, Castle Hills Elementary, and I mentioned to them about a crosswalk between the commons and, uh, the school, and they were all for it, and they're like, well, talk to the city, and I was like, I did, and I'm, talked to them again. So, I'm just letting y'all know, uh, they're all for it if we can get a crosswalk there.
Uh, you know, we're not allowed to, uh, speak...
I'll sit down.
Speak, no, 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 stay there, stay there. We're not allowed to speak to you during citizens to be heard. So, Mr. Gregory, could you, could you get with Bernard and explain to him where we're at on that, and, and when you do, thank him very much for his input.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you. Okay, do we...
Yes, sir. I'm here real quick, sir. I, I just wanted to add that we have been meeting with Tech Dot, or I, I've been meeting with Tech Dot, 'cause they are having a feasibility study going on about some possible changes to four-ten, because it's, as they call it, it's been ranked as one of the, this section of four-ten that Castle Hills is in, is one of the top one-hundred corridors as regards to traffic. So, they're looking at, uh, changing some things, and they're gonna be hosting a town hall at the City of Castle Hills in here, and I would encourage everybody who is available to come. Hopefully, we'll be able to put the information on the website when that's gonna happen, but it's, I, I don't have a final date yet, but I know it's sometime in October. So, uh, I would encourage everybody to come because I imagine that it will affect how we normally traffic.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. We're gonna do a quick announcements, real quick. Ms., uh, Scott, did you have any announcements that you wanted to give to the public? Ms. McLenn?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Uh, Mr. Paul? No? Well, how about you, Mr. Gregory?
An incident occurred with me yesterday, of which almost precluded my attending, and I'll tell you, after this meeting, I would've crawled to be at this meeting. I'm glad I was here. Thank you.
Oh, it tickles me pink. Okay. With that said, I would like to promote, uh, the, the Castle Hills Elementary School across the street. Again, uh, I think this, this really helps the community, and I'll go further than that. Anybody that wants to go tomorrow night, I'll buy the ticket. Uh, not, we're not talking about on Ustream, okay? You have to be present to win. You have to be present to win. But if anybody commits to going tomorrow night and, uh, who's here...
They don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. Doggone it, here, no, it's not free.
Seven dollars.
Believe me, it's not free. I'll have to take out a loan if y'all take me up. This is the Castle Hills Elementary School Presents Law and Order Fairy Tale Unit. It's tomorrow, September the twenty-seventh, at, uh, at Castle Hills Elementary. It starts at seven o'clock. They tell me it's gonna last about an hour, and, uh, like I said, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. If anybody wants, I'm not buying your ticket. Okay, so if anybody would like to go, I am committed to buying those tickets, including staff. Uh, i, if they would like to go, please see me, I'll make sure you get a ticket, and we'll get to sit on the front row. Are, are we able to sit on the front row?
Not everybody, but, and it's a two-night run. So, two-night run, tomorrow night and Thursday night.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought it was only on the twenty-seventh. Either way, if, if you'd like to go seriously, all jokes aside, you can email me if you're shy, and, uh, I'll be glad to take care of it. So, with that said, I, I'd like to, do I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Thank you. This meeting's over.